Good, okay. All right, so I'd like to call the meeting to order this morning and if we could get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let it be note that all the commissioners are here and present today. Are there going to be any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. So we will go to public comment for anybody that has any comment for items that are not on the agenda today. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period. And we're going to go into our consent agenda for approval of minutes and we have three sets of minutes that we will be approving and I would like to look to the commissioners for any comments they may have.
I have a couple of, oops. I have a couple of misspells that need to be corrected. On the first set of minutes for September 28th and 29th on October 2nd, on page one, Trevor Wiki, it should be Trevor Witkey, W.I.T.T.K.E. And more importantly, on page three, we misspelled Colleen Platt.
Oh.
It should be another E added to Colleen.
You are right.
Other than that, no problems.
Well, there's a couple others. Chuck Heel shows up twice.
Where is, what, which set?
On the first set, the September 28th and 29th at the bottom of page two, you see Chuck Heel spelled H-E-A-L. On page three, you see Chuck Heel spelled H-E-E-L. I don't know that he belongs there twice and if he does, he should probably be spelled the same way. And George Stevens is George Stevens, not Steven. That's all I got.
That's the problem when people don't sign in, I'm guessing.
I just happen to know George. Other than that, it looks fine to me.
Okay. Okay, so do we want to take these one at a time? Do you want to go review all three of them and then go for public comment on the three different sets? I think that'd probably be the simplest. Okay, so is there any comments on the other two copies? No?
Not for me.
Okay, good job, Annette. Okay, so is there any public comment on the minutes? All right, seeing none, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners for approval.
I move we approve these three sets of minutes that are before us on the agenda.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We're gonna go right into our public hearings and it looks like the first one is going to be for James West for modification of his existing permit. Peter, are you doing the presentation on this for us?
Yes.
Okay. He's gonna get his 15 minutes, James, then we're gonna come to you and then you'll get your 15 minutes as well. You can stand there if you want to, if you think you'll see better, but it's up to you.
Okay, this is a request for a modification of existing permit for approved plan development by James West. It is located on Commercial Way in Hathaway Pines, the first lot, when you first turn off Highway four, located there as shown in blue. The original approval was for a commercial building. It actually had been, as built, had been built previously without a permit. In order to clean that up, they need to go through the plan development process. It's the structure here that was constructed, used for a commercial shop. The request for modification is to delete condition 2-2, which requires the improvement of the frontage of Commercial Way to Template L, which is a standard commercial. The condition actually allowed for some flexibility with that, but they needed to come back and ask for that change. The Template L requires 12-foot travel lane, eight feet parking on each side, plus a seven-and-a-half foot sidewalk. The existing road is about 20 to 24 feet. This has been reviewed by a traffic engineer as part of the request and the Public Works Department has also reviewed this and sees no problem. What we discovered just recently was that the original subdivision included a waiver or variance to the road standards, so it was built according to what was approved by the planning commission back in, I believe it was in the 90s. And so it doesn't seem to be much of a problem with this request. There are some specific policies in the Hathaway Pines Community Plan that sort of single out this specific commercial area because of sort of its unique location. It's not really walkable from any other area. You'd have to walk on Highway four to get to it. Doesn't make a lot of sense to try to establish a lot of pedestrian use in an area that doesn't have any pedestrian use. These are primarily auto-oriented business located in this area. And so we found that this would be consistent with the exceptions that are harmed out in the Hathaway Pines Community Plan and as I said before, Public Works has recommended approval of the waiver. So we are recommending that you approve the modification request and essentially delete that condition and allow for the existing road improvement to remain as it is without any further road improvements. You have any questions?
Nope.
Yes, I have one. If I'm understanding this correctly, if the original subdivision included a waiver of these commercial road standards, then that, the condition that the planning commission put in here, condition 2-2, should never have been put in.
Arguably, I think had we known that at the time, we probably would not have put in the condition, but every time that a discretionary permit comes before the county, we have the ability to apply conditions appropriate to the development. It would make sense in this case not to have applied that condition. I think that's why, you know, we have no problem with granting this modification and limiting this condition. I think had we done a little more research at the time that the plan development was approved, what, a year or so ago, and realized that that had occurred back, you know, a couple decades ago, we wouldn't have imposed that condition.
The reason I raise that question is the Larry Wymer Traffic Engineering Report quotes the county code, section 2.02.380, and it has a set of criteria in there under which modification requests can be approved and they seem to be fairly limited.
Yes.
And it's not clear from, to me, from the record that those criteria are actually met, if what we're talking about is a modification under that code. But if we're talking about a situation in which there was a waiver upfront, that's completely different and I don't see why we would need to meet the criteria of the county code for a modification. If that's all correct, then I just think the resolution ought to reflect the fact of this prior waiver as a basis for the decision to grant this request.
Well, we could certainly add that, or if you prefer to, you know, swap out the findings related to the granting of the waiver and use that as basis for it. I think it could go either way. Or we could, or we could apply, we could add that finding as well to support the modification.
I think it would be best to at least have the finding in there concerning the waiver because this record is not very complete with respect to the physical characteristics of this site that make it so unusual that complying with this chapter would cause extreme hardship or other practical difficulties. The record is fairly clear that this improvement to the road is simply not needed, but that's not the standard under the modification code.
Well, wouldn't it be better then to have the waiver stated as the basis for our decision so that in a later case, we can be considering those conditions and whether they're met or not, not have this case as precedent?
I think so.
We seem to be getting to the modification resolution before we even hear from.
I'm gonna tend to agree with you, but I would like to, Peter, if you're finished with your presentation, can we have Mr. West come up, or do you have more you want to say?
No, I don't.
Okay. Does, before I go to Mr. West, Public Works is here. Mr. Pakenger, would you like to state something for the record?
Good morning, Robert Pakenger, Public Works. As is typical with these projects, when a modification request is submitted, we evaluate the various factors that go into a modification request. Typically, when a project comes to us, we're looking at traffic impact. The traffic engineer then has the opportunity to provide supporting information to indicate how traffic affects the roads. In this case, the traffic engineer provided information that indicates that the roadway is fine to accommodate the traffic of the proposed use. And so in accordance with section, county code section 12.02.380, he submits the study and makes a statement certifying that traffic safety is not compromised. So that to us is the thing that we're looking out for, traffic safety. So we're satisfied that that's been taken care of.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Mr. West, would you like to come up?
Morning.
How you doing?
Good. Do you have anything you want to add to what they said or debate what they said or?
Um, no.
You're happy with them?
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's good to hear.
It'd be nice to get a refund.
I'd give you one if I could. All right, so you have questions for Mr. West?
Yeah. To widen this roadway, you'd have to have two 12-foot lanes, that's 24 feet. Then you have to have eight feet parking on each side. That's another 16 feet. And you have to have sidewalks, so you wind up getting 31 feet wider. Is the topography of this road such that you could even do that without huge expense or practical difficulties?
It wouldn't be on our property. The widening out the roadway would be on someone else's property.
But even this, okay, but if it were your property, would you be able to do it given the?
No, there's a big ditch on Highway four where the water drains through, there's a big drop-off. And Caltrans owns that property. And then on the right-hand side, there's another ditch and then the Department of Forestry owns that property. So even if we wanted to widen that out, we'd be going on other people's property.
So that would appear to be quite a practical difficulty in doing it.
Well, we'd lose our house. There's no way we could pay for that.
Thank you.
I can vouch for the fact that those ravines do exist and it would be extremely difficult. So everything he's saying, I believe, is correct. Okay, is there any further questions? All right, thanks for your presentation.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, let's go to public comment and see if anybody in the public has anything they would like to say.
Good morning, Colleen Platt, My Valley Springs. I see no other public comment. We were just curious to see if anybody else in the area had anything to say. And if they didn't, we basically wanted to support this request for modification. The concern, the community has spoken, we feel, in the community plan that they basically would like people on this road to be given latitude to modify the county road and parking requirements. So I feel the community has already weighed in on this road and they're, you know, able to be flexible with standards also, so we support the planning department's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Do you have anything further you'd like to say?
I just have some proposed language if you'd like to add or substitute the finding for approval of the modification. Can I read that? You can either substitute, although I think it'd be better just to add it as a finding. Number, the finding number four, a waiver of the road standard was granted when the subdivision creating the parcel in which the plan development is located. And the evidence would be parcel map nine at 126 was approved by the planning commission on October 5th, 1995. At the time of approval, a variance to the road standard was granted with findings to support the variance. The road has been constructed to the standard approved at that time.
Could we also add something capturing what Mr. West just told us about the difficulties?
Would that be under three instead of four?
That would be a separate finding.
Yes, we could do that.
Which would then tie into the modification code.
We could say that there are physical constraints on the site that would make construction to Template L. I'm trying to think of the right word.
Would create practical difficulties.
Practical difficulties.
That being the phrase in the code.
And the evidence would be the constraints that Mr. West described, as well as the physical nature of the slope on the site and the ability to do that.
Correct.
And we can just take that from the record.
Correct.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? No? Okay, we're gonna get a motion as amended?
I would move to approve the request and sign a resolution as amended.
Thank you.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, thank you. That's it, you're done. Thank you, Robert, for coming today.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to item number two, appeal by Leslie Denham Newman. And this item has been remanded back to the planning commission by the Board of Supervisors. Peter, are you presenting all of these today for us or?
Just these first two.
Okay, thank you.
So this is an appeal, as you indicated, was remanded back from the Board of Supervisors. It was heard previously by the planning commission. The appeal was denied, was subsequently appealed to the Board of Supervisors. At the board meeting, the appellant provided or indicated they had additional information that would be applicable to this appeal and based on our code, that any new information, if the board felt it was applicable to the appeal, needs to be remanded back to the planning commission for consideration. So that was what was done. This was denied because the appellant failed to get the required Water Board permit, the notice of applicability from the Water Board. It'd been notified at least twice by the Water Board of incomplete application. On the second notice that was sent out, I believe it was in June of last year, there was no response that we were aware of and after several months, the planning department denied the cultivation registration because of the lack of response to the notice of incomplete application from the Water Board to the appellant. The new information that was provided was the phone records that showed that he had made several calls to the Water Board and this was what was presented to the board as far as new information and indicated that he had made an effort to comply with the Water Board's requirements. We looked at that and while, yes, there was, you know, a couple of calls that were made, we did not feel that that was really substantial effort made in complying with the requirements. This was something that was required to be done in September of 2016 and I think it was denied in September of 2017, a year later. And so while, yes, there were a couple of phone calls made, we did not feel that that was a concerted enough effort to comply with the requirements, something that was actually necessary a year in advance. Now, we had taken a fairly liberal approach at working with the appellant or working with the registrants and understanding that the Water Board was equally so or more backlog than we were in trying to process all of these notices and the Water Board requirements for the registrants and not just in Calaveras County, but throughout most of the North State. And so, you know, we did not immediately deny anyone that had an incomplete application because we knew that there was some time that was necessary to work with the Water Board to come into compliance. If you feel that a, you know, that the phone calls that were made were, you know, sufficient effort to come into compliance, then it is within your prerogative to grant the appeal. However, if you feel that this was not a sufficient enough effort, then we would recommend that you deny the appeal. So I think what we'd like to do is focus on the new information, not rehear the whole thing, although it's within your discretion to do so. But the issue really before you is whether or not the effort made by the registrant was sufficient to warrant granting the appeal and allowing us to continue with the registration process on this application.
I have a few questions. One, I just don't understand the sentence on page three of the current staff report that draws a distinction between communications with Mr. Parker at the Water Quality and Control Board and a failure to contact any employee with the CVRWQCB Cannabis Enforcement Unit. I don't, I mean, if he was in communication with Mr. Parker, was he also supposed to be in communication with somebody else? And if so, why weren't you, why wasn't the planning department talking with that somebody else instead of trying to communicate with Mr. Parker? It seems.
Mr. Parker, I believe, is with the enforcement unit.
So this sentence makes no sense, huh? He's like, he made three attempts to call Mr. Parker, but no attempts were made to contact any employee with the Cannabis Enforcement Unit.
No, what we're saying is that he made three calls to Mr. Parker, who is with the enforcement unit. But, you know, he made a call in July, on July 11th, and then over a month later, he makes a subsequent call. And then not until September, you know, after we had denied the request, was there any other follow-up?
Okay.
So three calls over, you know, several month period was, you know, our feeling that.
Yeah, but those three calls, though, were made to the right person.
Yes, they were made to the right person.
So this statement about failure to, between July 11th and August 18th, 2017, to contact any employee with the enforcement unit, makes no sense, does it?
No, what we're saying is, he didn't make any call between that time period. A month went by, you know, you call someone and you don't hear back, you know, I usually call again a couple days later or a week later.
Well, isn't that, that's the period in which he made those three calls.
No, he made a call on the 11th and a call on August 18th.
Okay, let's, hold on just one second, everybody.
According to the phone records.
Oh, okay.
A call was made on July 11th and another call was made on August 18th.
I see, I see. You have your chance. So, I mean, the planning department itself found that, there's an email in here from Madeline Flandreau, that he's a tough one to get on the phone. I mean, the planning department recognizes that Mr. Parker is hard to get a hold of, right? And the appeal letter, the original appeal letter, states that these three phone calls were made. That was a part of the record of the first time around and the Board of Supervisors has simply asked for substantiation of that claim, as far as I can see it. If we look at the appeal letter, let's see, dated 21st September, 2017.
A minute. Let Julie interrupt for just one minute.
I just, on a, just for a procedural issue, Mr. Maur raised something that I think needs to just be addressed briefly, which is he indicated that the planning commission could either focus on just the new evidence or has within its discretion the ability to rehear the entire case de novo, which I don't think it's quite that simple. I think it would require the planning commission to interpret our remand provision to determine what the proper scope of the hearing is and then apply that consistently into the future. So I don't think it's a case-by-case determination.
If I could speak to that, as I was just, the point I was just making is that these phone calls were already a part of the appeal before. The appellant says, "In July 2017, I received a second notice. At this time, I began calling Michael Parker and left him several voicemails over the course of a few weeks. I never got any response for amendment, et cetera." I don't remember at the hearing if he specifically said what dates he made those phone calls, but those phone calls were a part of the previous hearing. And I can get back to your point here in a second. The Board of Supervisors, taking that record, said remand to get further evidence as to those phone calls. The phone calls were a part of the record before. They wanted substantiation that indeed he made those phone calls. If we just were now to say, ah, yes, he made those phone calls, without looking at the context of those phone calls within the entire record, I don't see how we reach any decision. It's, the phone calls were a part of the record before. Board of Supervisors wanted to verify the veracity of the claim that those phone calls were made, which he has done. I think we need to take a look at the whole record with those phone calls as a part of it to see what the proper result is. Obviously, the Board of Supervisors thinks those phone calls were relevant, or they would not have asked for this additional evidence. If those are relevant, why then it's relevant what was going on in communications between the appellant and the Water Quality Appeals Board? And that has nothing to do with whether he was keeping, also keeping the planning department itself informed. So I think we have to look at the whole thing and whether or not the Water Quality Control Board was satisfied with what the appellant was trying to accomplish.
I wasn't actually responding to what Commissioner Ladish was saying. I just wanted to, before we went too far afield, make sure that the supervisor, or make sure the commissioners understand that from my perspective, it's not as simple, choose how you want to do the hearing. It's basically just, it requires a little bit of statutory interpretation and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the way, with what you're saying in particular.
Oh, I wasn't taking it that way.
Yeah, okay.
I just thought it was, your comments were pertinent to exactly what I was saying.
Okay, okay.
And I... And, and I, I failed to see, if we interpret the statute as a remand from the Board of Supervisors just as a clinical determination, yes, he made those phone calls, the natural question is, so what? I mean, I think it would be irrational to say, yes, he made those phone calls and therefore the Board of Supervisors requires us to reach a decision in the appellant's favor. I think that's, that's not the intent of the ordinance or of what the Board of Supervisors is getting at. On the other hand, I don't see where we can say, yes, he made those phone calls, Board of Supervisors, but so what? We're going to disregard them as irrelevant. Because I think the Board of Supervisors has already determined that those phone calls are relevant. So we need to look at the big picture of what was going on between the appellant and the Water Quality Appeals Board.
The difference between what was presented to the Planning Commission in the first hearing and what was presented at the Board was, a statement was made, "I made several calls." He then had the records of the phone calls, which we did not have at this prior hearing. So the Board said, "Oh, this is new information, the actual record of the phone calls. That should go back to the Planning Commission."
Right.
So it's, I don't know how you can necessarily just take that component without looking at the full picture of the appeal process. But I would defer to counsel as far as, you know, what our code says as far as the nuances of the hearing process. I think that, in my experience, a remand has been, you know, let's look at the pertinent facts that apply to the new information and would that change your determination?
I agree with all of this. I just, I wasn't attempting to further, for the respect, I think there was just confusion in what I said. I think, I just wanted to clarify at the outset that a de novo hearing on all possible facts would be a different situation than just going back with respect to the phone calls and the context of the phone calls. And so I was really just trying to distinguish between dealing with the phone calls, records, and the context in which they were, you know, the Water Board was involved versus literally a hearing on things other than the phone calls that may have come up before. That's all I was trying to say.
Yeah. I wasn't taking what you said as a challenge, what I was saying, and I...
I feel like I created confusion.
I fully agree with Peter. I think we have to look at, take those phone calls and the substantiation of those phone calls and, again, look at it in the big picture.
Okay. So, on that note, we're just repeating ourselves over and over again here, and we need to get moving forward.
Well, I have some other questions.
Okay.
Okay. The statement on September 19th, 2017, and the email from Michael Parker, when it says, "After a conversation with the appellant, this conversation has satisfied the second notice of incomplete, in which the 30 days to respond no longer applies. After we receive the required documentation, we can move forward the permitting process." Now, didn't this email wipe the slate clean of the second notice from the point of view of the Water Quality Cultivation Control Board? I mean, they're continuing to deal with it.
As far as the Water Board is concerned, yes, they got what they needed. They, they are required, and they require cultivators, to meet the requirements of the general order for water quality, whether or not they are in compliance with county code.
Yeah, I mean, but it's up, it's up to us to determine whether, if they're in compliance with the, with the Water Quality Control Board, does that satisfy the county code? Is that, that's the basic question before, isn't it?
Well, yes and no. We require that they have a complete application as of, I think it was September 7th, 2016. We provided quite a bit of leeway, knowing that the Water Board was backed up and it took some time for the registrants to supply all the information that the Water Board needed. And so as long as the registrants were making a good faith effort to comply with the Water Board requirements, we have allowed them to continue through the registration process. When the Water Board sent out a notice of incomplete application to a number of registrants, that triggered, you know, our review of those registrations, saying, well, you know, have they done anything to, to comply? You know, are they working, making a good faith effort to work with the Water Board to come into compliance? Or are they just blowing it off? And in some cases, you know, we could see that, yes, you know, the documentation was provided by the registrant, saying, "I'm still working with them. I've hired these specialists to provide the information required, and it's in review right now." And in other cases, and there's been several that have been denied for lack of any subsequent action.
Sure, but here we have the Water Quality Control Board saying, "Oh, okay."
After the fact.
We'll play along.
Yeah, so this was, I believe this was January, are you, which email are you referring to, the one that's...
I'm looking at September 19th, 2017, after they finally, Parker and the appellant finally talked.
So this says, okay, they have responded, and they, after we receive the required documentation, we can move forward with the permitting process. So it said, "Okay, thank you for responding."
But, but they wiped away the second notice of incomplete.
Yes, as far as they're concerned.
Yeah, and on page three of the, of the staff report, right at the very bottom, it seems to be that a ground for this denial is that the appellant had failed to submit sufficient evidence to the Planning Department that he was making a concerted effort to comply. Is that the, the true basis of this denial?
Yes.
Okay, so that, no matter if he's keeping in contact with the Water Board in such a way that eventually the Water Board says, "You're, you're fine. You are making a good faith effort with us. We will continue to work with you. We may not have received stuff that you have indicated you have sent to us, but we're, you're fine with us." The fact that he is not calling the Planning Department, saying, "I'm trying to reach them, I'm trying to reach them," and keeping you constantly informed, is, is a reason for the denial. I, I don't, I have a hard time separating that from the fact that he did obviously make a good faith effort to comply with the Water Quality Control Board.
Sugar. I don't know why we don't have two mics this morning, but we discussed this at the previous hearing on this appeal at the Planning Commission. We talked about the difference between our county code and the goals and policy decisions that underpin what the Water Board does. And the Water Board's policy is obviously to bring as many cultivation sites as they possibly can under their control so that water pollution isn't happening. And they want to give everyone the opportunity to comply as long as it takes, because they want to get people into the program, because they don't want water pollution to occur. And we passed this urgency ordinance that made a hard and fast deadline. So I think there's two, two bases of denial, basically. One is, as you indicated, the, that he failed to keep Peter apprised of what he was doing. But the flip side of that, and the real basis, is September 7th came and went, and he didn't have a complete application with the State Water Resources Control Board.
Yeah, but that, in previous cases, where we've said, "But that's okay, as long as you're making a good faith effort to..."
Well, I don't, I don't think in appeals before this commission, we have done that. I mean, I think that it's generally the case that we have applied it as a hard and fast deadline.
No, I, unfortunately, we have not kept it as a hard and fast deadline. We have said that as long as they are making progress towards compliance, they submitted the paperwork to us on that date, and they continue to work towards that and appraise us of that, then we would not deny it. We had a number of appeals that, or, yes, of appeals that were denied because they did not submit any documentation because on the, on the September 7th deadline. And then it was later after the fact, so try to come in. So getting back to your original question, though, this documentation came in after we had denied the application. And so at the time that the application was denied on September 7th, there was no correspondence from either the Water Board or the applicant, saying, "I'm working on this," you know, that, you know, and the, I believe the information that was finally submitted came in, what, on the 19th? At least that's when the Water, Water Board responded to the contact, and then the appeal was filed shortly thereafter, a second. So at the time we denied it, there had been no action taken, as far as we were aware of, indicated that they had responded to either of the notices of incomplete, the one sent out in January or the one sent out in June.
But, but in that case, the, the three phone calls, since they were, you were not informed of those three phone calls, they would be irrelevant to the denial. The three phone calls he made to the, to Mr. Parker would be irrelevant. We shouldn't even, forgetting for a moment the Board of Supervisors thinking that they're relevant, we shouldn't even be considering those because he didn't let you know that he was making those phone calls.
No, I don't think that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that, at the time that we denied it, we did not know about that.
I understand that.
Subsequently, we were told in the appeal letter, "Well, I tried to call him and got no response."
But that makes, made no difference.
But to us, it's like, well, you know, and we didn't really have that information.
But it doesn't that mean that they're irrelevant to your decision?
It was irrelevant to our decision at the time we made it. Now, there have been situations where there has been communication between the Water Board and an applicant, that we find out later, says, "Oh, you were working on that. That makes sense." And we rescinded our denial, because we later found out there was a lack of communication from the Water Board to us, or misinformation provided from the Water Board to us in certain circumstances. We provided a list of the people that were out of compliance, and we denied someone. And then we later found out that, wait a second, I'm not, you know, he wasn't out of compliance, that he just got on the wrong list. And so we rescinded that action. But in this case, all we have was, okay, he contacted the Water Board after we denied it. You know, so three months after, yeah, three months after the notice went out, he finally got in touch with, or provided the information that the Water Board needed, but it was after we denied it. And so, you know, this is...
He provided the information before you denied, but didn't he?
Well, he had...
You just said he didn't tell you that he was providing the information.
That's correct.
Okay. I, I'll kind of let the hearing go on.
There's a, there's an email in the file of January 10th of this year, from the Water Board, to the applicant, and it says in part, "The State Water Resources Control Board adopted a statewide general order on 17 October 2017. Since we have yet to receive the documentation needed to process your enrollment under the Central Valley Board's order, you will have to reapply under the statewide general order for coverage pending the outcome of your appeal with the county. So far as you know, is the statement that the Water Board has not yet received the documentation needed to process the enrollment under the Central Valley Board's order. Is that correct, so far as you know?"
As far as I know, yes, that's correct.
And do you know whether he's reapplied under the statewide general order pending the outcome of his appeal here?
I don't know. No, I don't know.
Do you know whether the statewide general order supersedes the previous, the Central Valley Regional Board order?
That's my understanding, yes.
Does it have a tier system like the, like the Central Valleys did?
I believe it's very similar. There are some changing requirements. I'm not familiar with the specifics of what the new general order requires.
Okay, so we don't know whether the, the new statewide order requires a biological sized assessment or cultural resources inventory?
I would suspect that they are very similar.
Okay. One more question. Do you have a copy of a Tier 3 NOI that the applicant says he submitted in October of 2016? And if so, when, when, when did your department get it?
I think it's in the original packet.
I believe it's in the file, but let me just pull up the original packet. In the file, we have a copy of the notice of intent to file for coverage, but I do not see a date on it. I believe it was submitted with his packet for registration.
Well, there's two, there's two NOIs. There's a Tier 2 one that was submitted in August of 2016, and then there's a Tier 3 one that was signed in October of 2016.
Right.
And my question is, when did you guys get the Tier 3 one, if you did get it?
I have the Tier 3, which is the October 2016.
That might just have been attached to the appeal, to his brief before the board.
Here, I'm clear.
There it is.
But you know, we looked at this at the last hearing.
Yes.
Comes right after the brief.
Hey, it's attached to Mr. Williams' letter of January 11, 2018. That's the Tier 3 applicant or notice of intent.
Right, right.
So did Mr. Vitale answer your question as to when we received it?
No, we know there's a Tier 3 application, and we know it's dated and signed in October of 2016, but my question is, when did the Planning Department receive a copy of it? First receive a copy of it?
The only stamped date I see is the January 11th one on that document. Are you thinking that that's new evidence as well?
I'm not certain that we ever received that. But I'd need to go through the file more thoroughly to make sure. I'll continue to...
From our package, it looks as if, if, the only copy we have in our package, it looks as if it were an attachment to the appeal letter to the Board of Supervisors, a copy of which was received by the Planning Department on January 11th, 2018.
I, I don't see in our file a copy of the Tier 3 application that was submitted to the Water Board, but not a copy submitted to us.
Commissioner Wuster, are you going to have other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, then, well, Peter, while you look, I think what I'd like to do is bring up the appellant. Maybe he has something certified and stamped showing differently, and we can ask these questions of him after he's finished with his presentation. Would you like to come up and do your presentation now?
Good morning, madam chairman, members of the commission. My name's Chris Williams. I'm representing... I'm representing Leslie in this remand. I guess, a couple things. I, I think it was Chief Justice Earl Warren who always said, "But is it fair?" I don't think what's going on here is fair. And I, I was first going to apologize for the tone of my paper, but I look at how hard we're working, how hard we're working to, to this guy. He submitted that second application, that NOI, in October by email to Madeline Flandreau on October 17th, 17. I attached it to my appeal before the Planning Commission. So for now, and I remember Peter pulling it out at the meeting. So, they had it. They've forgotten about it. And our whole point on that was that, why would he go to the trouble of getting four landowners to sign that thing and not submit it to the Board? The Water Board. He did. He did that. Let me get back to the, the housekeeping thing. I kind of jammed my client up on, I, I didn't give him time to review my paper this time before I submitted it. So he didn't have a chance to look at the tone of it. And he, he did point out one mistake that I have in my, on fourth paragraph, page one.
Are you talking about the brief that you submitted yesterday?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. Second sentence, I say, "The registrant's telephone records showed that he talked to Water Board personnel at least three times after receiving the second notice." Of course, that's, he didn't talk to them. He made phone calls to try to reach them, as we, as we discussed today. And he was in and out of the county offices ad nauseam in this period that we're saying, oh, he didn't do anything, he wasn't doing anything. He was in and out of the Planning Department for all kinds of reasons. Did the Planning Department ever make inquiry to the Water Board? Did they ever make inquiry to him of the situation with the Water Board? No. And what, when, the big thing to me is, what's his, is his responsibility to keep the Water Board on its toes? I mean, he had, as, as Commissioner Latish has, has been hinting at, what was going on here? I mean, he was in regular contact with the Water Board because there were differences of opinion between he and staff about whether he was 200 feet from a stream, whether he had over an acre. There was even discussion about whether he was, he was subject to an overall exemption because of land had prior been used as grazing lands. I mean, there was, there was discussion. And at the Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Director himself said, "Oh, yeah, we, we give, we give the applicant latitude if we know they're working with the Water Board." He confirmed that this morning. So I, I just, I don't know why people are working so hard to deny this guy. And, and, and part of it is, what difference does it make at this point? There is no commercial cannabis cultivation allowed anymore. All he wants is to be, for it to be noted that he was never denied as a registrant. He wants to have a clean record. I did everything I was supposed to do. And so that, and, and I don't know what the requirements frankly are under the state, the new state regulations, but it's probably fair to say, it's good if you don't, if you're not on a list of people who were denied by the local entity. That's all. I mean, you know, the program's over. But, you know, I'd be glad to answer questions, but I, I just, you thrust the applicant into the role of, of having to carry out the Water Board's enforcement mechanism. I mean, he, he didn't have any, you know, he submitted, see, this is the thing that keeps getting forgot, forgotten. He, he did submit that second NOI. Now, he doesn't have a FedEx stamped copy of it, or certified mail receipt for it. And I think what happened is, it got lost at the Water Board. I mean, change in personnel, millions of applications, et cetera, et cetera. But again, I just say, just commonsensically, why would he have all of his landowners sign something and then not submit it? So, I don't know if you have any further questions. You have what I submitted, and as I say, I, I should apologize for the tone of it, but it's very frustrating when I feel like people are working as hard as they can, not to get to the right answer, but to get to, for some reason, the answer they want. I mean, I can't believe this. The, the second application that he filed was given to the Planning, the Planning Department way back in October. It was submitted to my brief, and that was January, or I don't, ah, but, but, but Peter already had it in his file because he pulled it out during the, January. So, everybody knew what was going on. This thing about, oh, yeah, but he didn't make, he didn't make a phone call in the one month period between July 11th and August 18th. Nobody else did either. Planning Commission didn't inquire him, where's, where's that, what's going on with the Water Board? Nothing. And as I say, why should the applicant, who knows kind of what's going on at the Water Board, be, be doing their job for him? And, no, he has not filed another application, and no, he has not, to the Water Board, and since this all started, since he was denied, and he hasn't spent $20,000 to finish his environmental review because he's on a denial mode. Why would he do that? When it's so clear that the effort is to deny him? So I think, and, and there's no issue, there's absolutely no issue of environmental degradation that, oh my goodness, you know, the Board is not, the Water Board has not signed off on this, there could be damage to the water resources. There's no allegations of that. There isn't, none of that. He has been, well, I think that Madeline Flandreau, who was his case manager, his last day was last Friday, so you can't ask her, but I think that he has a very clean compliance record. He got all the permits he was supposed to get from the county. And I just, I guess I'm just asking you to look at the, the situation in a common sense manner and, and, and give the guy a break. It is absolutely, what, where's the precedent? Where does it hurt you? I mean, he'd been assuming it was the wrong action on your part. The program's over, I think. So, you've got my, my paper, and, and if you read that and read it along with the appeal that we filed with the Board of Supervisors, then I, I think you understand our position. But I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Well, Mr. Williams, speaking of your appeal to the Board of Supervisors, your letter brief to the Board of Supervisors states that you have, quote, "Found the Planning Commission's and the Board's denials to be preordained, premeditated to get to no," unquote. This portion of your advocacy is not only patently offensive and potentially counterproductive, it also is quite inaccurate. This Planning Commission, after lengthy discussions, has decided for appellants a number of times. In this particular case, full and detailed proceedings before this commission, including discussions by the commissioners, resulted in a close three to two vote against your client. On its face, that result was neither preordained nor premeditated. Personally, I voted in favor of your client. But I can assure you that the votes in the majority against your client were reached only after fully considering this case on its merits. I'm also confident that while you, as a representative, have impugned the integrity of this commission, your client's case today will be determined only after a full consideration of all the evidence presented to us, including any new evidence. That's all I have to say for now.
Commissioner, I agree with what you said to an extent. When I wrote those words, that was back in January. And a lot of my experience was, there has been a reconstitution of this body to an extent. What I had seen in my own appeals and sitting here in other appeals were very, very strict interpretations. And I mean, Commissioner Worcester will recall one, having to do with the, the issue of, well, we have to be sure that you are the landowner by May 10th. And, and that requires that you have a deed, I think, that, no, that you have recorded a deed by May 10th. And he, he kind of beat me to the punch. He, he said, well, normally, it's enough if you have the intent to deliver a deed and you deliver a deed, that's possession. And possession is what the statute talks about. But we didn't, but that's not what the position you guys took. No, it actually has to have been recorded.
So are you, are you basically saying-
No, no, I'm, I'm making it, I'm making it-
Your statement is out of date? Is that what you said?
I'm making an example that, in that case, it wasn't recorded on May 10th because it didn't leave the title company soon enough, or it sat on some, no, I'm just making examples.
I know.
It sat on somebody's desk in the recording, in the recorder's office, and I-
I'm going to interrupt for a second because we are completely off the topic of this agenda.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to defend myself here against some comments that in part are-
I don't, I don't, I know, I want to move on with the case, though. I think that what we're going to do, we're starting a little pissing match here that we don't need today.
No, I'm, I'm not. I don't intend to.
Okay, let's get back to the case at hand, and let's deal with the facts before us. We have your documentation, and then I have a specific question for you. Are you telling me at the Board of Supervisors, when they had the appeal hearing, that Peter physically produced the tier three without it being attached to your documents?
Yeah, he was fiddling with his papers on the table.
So if we take a break and I go watch the video, I'm going to see that he had tier three in his possession at that meeting.
No, I, I don't, I don't know that the camera was on then, and I'd rather you not take a break. The, I remember the fiddling around with the papers, yeah, what-
I have an email from, from Peter.
Okay, okay, stop right there for just a minute.
On October 17th, producing that tier.
Chris, can you read the email, please?
Yeah, sure. I think.
And that, what, that email said was actually the original submission to the Planning Commission?
You can come up to the mic.
Okay. This, this was part of the original submission of the staff report to the Planning Commission. I'm not sure why it was omitted this time, and it was also-
Was that tier two or tier three?
Tier three.
Okay. And what's the date of that email?
The date of the email to Madeline Flandreau from Leslie Denham is October 17th, 2017.
Okay, that's what we have in our file, is October 17th. We have that.
Yeah.
Right. That's the one that's signed.
I think he's saying October 17th of 2017.
Correct.
Well, that's what we have, is 2017. We don't have anything predating that, correct?
You would have had the original.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, okay, so let me, okay, you're saying you emailed the tier three October 17th to Madeline, and then you attached it to your January, so therefore the Board of Supervisors did have it?
Correct.
Got it. Makes more sense. Okay.
Well, and, and back to Commissioner Latish, I, I admire your participation as a member and, but I, I'm speaking from what I have seen in my experience and discussions, and I mean, just my observation of staff today, the way they're jockeying so hard to find a reason not to grant my client relief. And I, I don't think the reason exists. At least, so, and, and then, let me, let me just add this. There's just a series of emails, you know, after the denial and of his registration by the staff, he was in regular communication with Madeline Flandreau, and I think somebody on the commission referred to some emails that they saw. There was a lot of communication. Madeline herself was not able to get in touch with people at the Water Board. And it, it's just, there was a lot of effort, really. I mean, he wanted to succeed, he wanted to get things done, but the fact that he didn't make another contact between July 11th and August 18th seems to me a pretty thin thread to deny his request for reinstatement of his application.
Doesn't seem odd to you, if you're getting a letter that could potentially get you a denial, that you would lapse any communication for two months to the county? That just seems odd to me. Does he have communication?
No, can I address this? Because there was some misinformation provided by Peter earlier. I received a second notice, a thirty day to comply from the Water Board on, I believe it was June 27th. I made my first phone, phone call on July 6th, received notice, left a message for Michael Parker, which the notice, it directed me to call Michael Parker, called him, left a message, no response. July 11th, called, left a message, no response. August, so then, a month passed, after I called twice, after Peter said, when I don't hear back from somebody, I call again in a couple days. I did. So I did, I called again in a couple days. Then I didn't call for a month. Left another third voicemail. Never heard anything back. September 7th, Planning Department denies me. At which time, I started talking to Madeline, and then began calling Michael Parker more. And she did as well. And then a week later, he gets back to her, and then I finally talked to him.
We have acknowledged here that Michael Parker is horrible with communication. We've seen it in appeals. We're not denying that as, as the commission, because I think we can all state that we've seen the emails, lack of communication, that existed. Then there was a change of employees there as well. We're aware of all that. I think what the question came down to is communication with our county. Your communication with the Water Board is documented. I see the emails, I see your phone records, I see it all. The lack of communication with the county complying with the urgency ordinance and staying on top of the Water Board documentation with our county was the issue at hand. I'm not questioning your ability to communicate with the Water Board. I see it. The, the, the denial came out of the Planning Department based on no communication with them. As far as they knew, you gave up. Because they didn't hear from you for two months. I can understand that. I would think you gave up too. And you know what? We can't, we had to keep processing these. We had a lot to process, we still have more to process. So they had to keep moving that forward.
May I respond to that?
Absolutely.
So, as Chris mentioned, I was in and out of the Planning Department from that, between that time period of October 2016 to the denial in '17, probably a half a dozen times, getting other permits after I had my property inspected. Nobody ever mentioned anything from the Planning Department about the Water Board whatsoever. I was getting permits for other things, for grading and for the hoop houses, for electrical, for, for the shipping containers. I was getting permits for, I was talking with people at the Planning Department, at the Building Department, Public Works, everything. Nobody mentioned a thing about the Water Board. As far as I knew, I sent the tier three NOI in to the- As far as I knew, I sent the tier three NOI in to the Water Board in 2016. Trey Sherrill, who I spoke to at the time then, said, we'll get back to you when we're ready to process. That's all I heard until I got a denial from you guys. I had no communication from the Planning Department.
You sent tier three in? I see documentation of tier two, and then you got the letter saying that you filled it out wrong and you need to submit tier three. Did something change in there?
I sent tier three, the Water Board doesn't have it. I sent tier three when I got it signed in 2016. I sent it, I mean, I don't have the exact date, I don't have proof that I sent it.
Because you weren't, were you even contacted by the Water Board that you sent in the wrong tier in, in 2016?
Yeah, September, yes, in, in mid-September 2016, they sent me a notice of incomplete NOI.
Okay, you're right. You are correct. Okay. All right. Does any other commissioners have any questions? Okay.
I just want to make sure that when the email went to the Planning Department in October with the tier three assessment, or application or NOI, that was October of 2017 and not October of 2016?
That's correct.
So there was nothing that went from you to the Planning Department in October of 2016 saying, I've submitted a tier three?
No, I was not aware I needed to keep them apprised. As far as I understood, the Water Board had independent communication with the Planning Department verifying people's compliance with the general order.
Okay, and, after you got to September 19th of 2017, communication from Parker saying you've, you're working on providing the documents for the tier size of your site, and after they get the documentation, they can move forward with the permitting process. What did they need? A biological assessment?
Yeah, there's a, there's, well, subsequently, the, the Central Valley Water Board general order is not applicable anymore, now they have the new statewide one. But yes, they need a biological site assessment, assessment and a cultural resources inventory.
Okay, do they have those documents yet?
No, I'm, I've, my whole process with this has been on hold since I received the denial. You know, I cannot in good conscience dedicate the, the time or, or money to proceeding with those studies without knowledge that I'll be granted the ability to, to run the operation from you guys. That would just be a poor decision.
So same, the same reason explains why you haven't applied under the statewide general order?
Yeah, I'm on hold with this, the whole process. For the last six months, I've, I don't know what the future is going to hold for me.
Okay, and, after you got the second notice of an incomplete NOI in late June, are there any emails from you to either the Water Board or to the Planning Department saying in substance, wait a minute, I submitted a tier three?
No, there's just the phone call, phone call records.
Of which you couldn't get a hold of anybody?
Yeah.
Did you leave a message with Mr. Parker on any of those phone calls saying, I applied for tier three?
Every single time. I left lengthy voicemails.
So you didn't just call him up and leave a message saying, this is Leslie, please call me?
No, I left lengthy voicemails, talking about Trey Sherrill and the discussions we had, and, yeah, and like my, my claims about the distance to the, to the river and whatnot.
Well, no, I'm talking about commencing in July of 2017, after you got the, the second notice, you'd already determined that you needed to be tier three, and you'd already submitted the tier three NOI, correct?
It was, so, my discussions with Trey Sherrill in 2016, said, I was, I was basically arguing with him about my determination. And he said, you know what? We can't deal with this right now, just submit a tier three, and then we'll bring this back up when we get to you.
Okay, but I'm, I'm limiting my questions to the time period commencing June 27th through August 11th of 2017. And my question is, in any of your voicemails to Mr. Parker, did you tell him that you had already submitted a tier three NOI?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I went over the whole history with my correspondence with Trey Sherrill about, I left lengthy voicemails.
Okay.
I mean, I think the phone records, some of, one of those calls is like three minutes. That's like a long voicemail.
Thank you.
I have a bit of housekeeping here. Mr. Williams, are you aware of the Planning Commission hearing procedures of September 2017? Basically, our court rules? It requires amongst other things that briefs be filed by 5:00 PM on Monday before the hearing and filed with the clerk of the Planning Commission. And it also provides that if timely filing is not made, why we are, we can disregard the filing, or if we decide, we can have the discretion to consider it. Obviously, filing yesterday with the clerk of the Board of Supervisors did not comply with those rules. I'd like to commend you that you become familiar with those rules. I personally have no problem with considering the brief that you filed yesterday, so there's no further charge of unfair treatment by this commission or by the Planning Department, but please confer, comply with the rules in the future.
I appreciate that, and I personally appreciate your consideration of all the argument that was made today.
Okay. Is there any further commissioner questions? Commissioner Bocelli?
I have a question of Peter.
Okay.
Now?
Now's good.
Mr. Maurer, you mentioned something called rescission of your denial, and you also mentioned that in the past, we, you have allowed other applicants to work with the Water Board, good faith sorts of things. Listening to this gentleman's story, and seeing the emails, and seeing the, the tier three NOI, and the final decision from Parker, that everything's okay, it seems to me, I just appears that this would be a classic example of, of rescission. I, I don't, I don't see the point of the denial at this point. I can understand why it was done at the time, but we didn't have the whole picture. And looking at the whole picture, and knowing this man has not done anything wrong, he's done everything possible to keep, you know, to comply with our UO and everything else, I just think it might be something to be considered by the Planning Director, comma, you.
It really wasn't a question, but-
Thank you.
I respond. I suppose this could go either way. And at this point, it's been remanded back to the Planning Commission, and I'm going to defer to your judgment on this.
I think the word was once punt.
Okay.
Differ is good.
What, I'd like, unless you have any questions, Commissioner Sisk, I'd like to go to public comment. Okay. Is there anybody in the public that has any comment on this appeal? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I am going to bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Want to start at that end and work this way? Want to start at this end? How about we start in the middle?
Well, just repeating what I just said in my question to Mr. Maurer, it, it just looks to me like the applicant did everything he should have done, and the suggestions that he didn't contact the Planning Department when he was repeatedly contacting the Water Control Board, I, it just leaves me empty. I, I can just picture him jumping through these hoops that we set, for good reason. We've set them for very good reasons. But he did jump through them, and he had to come down, and he, I guess he had grading permits, I don't know what all he was doing. But he was certainly following through with the Water Board, and everybody, even Madeline apparently admits that Mr. Parker was difficult to reach. We have, we now have the telephone logs that show he did make phone calls. Maybe he didn't make it every day, but he certainly did quite a few. And I think he's done everything possible to comply with our UO, and I don't, I don't think it should be denied, so I would, I'm not sure what we're voting on. I, I guess I would vote against the resolution, so.
My vote stays the same as it was last time?
Could you turn your mic, please?
He still didn't comply, he still didn't keep the county until afterwards, in October. It was denied in, I have it, it was denied on the 7th. He then sent the email to us in October of 2017, and then we never received a copy until October 17th, he sent a copy to Madeline, then we received a copy in January from the attorney. My vote's going to stay the same.
Well, okay. He, he did do something wrong. He, he applied for the wrong tier to begin with. That's where this all started. And the form of the NOI itself provides a tier three includes those whose cultivation areas and associated facilities occupy and/or disturb more than one acre. His did. And he was, he should have applied for tier three, and it doesn't matter whether he was in two, within 200 feet of the river or not. It was tier three based on the size. It appears he did submit a tier three application. I accept his, his word on that, and it wouldn't make sense for him to go through all the process of preparing it and getting the landowners to sign it without submitting it. And it appears the Water Board didn't get it, or they lost it. He did not contact the Planning Department to let them know he had submitted it. He didn't send it to the Planning Department in October of 2016. Then we get the June 27th, 2017, second notice from the Water Board, which should have alerted him to the fact that the Water Board, for whatever reason, didn't have or didn't think it had, his tier three NOI. So he placed the three phone calls, there are no emails, there's no resubmission of the tier three NOI to the Water Board, no communications with the Planning Department whatsoever, once he knew he had the problem. He still hasn't obtained the required surveys. So he hasn't submitted the documentation required under the Central Valley Board's general order yet, and hasn't applied under the statewide general order. Now, I understand the reasons, he doesn't want to spend the resources doing that when the county is in, has him in a, has his application here denied, but there was nothing to stop him from doing it. He could have resubmitted. I, I think this is a pretty close case. But I think I'm prepared to stand by the original decision, because I don't see that, even considering the fact of the three phone calls, which are to be taken as fact, so far as I'm concerned, I don't think I see enough here to change.
Well, if our test is, has he made a good faith effort to comply with the Water Board's compliance? I think a good reference point to see whether or not he has made a good faith effort to comply with the Water Board is to look to see what the Water Board says. The Water Board says, now, now that you've made things clear, we're wiping our second notice from the record, and we will work with you with the submission of further documents. And as far as I can see, the Water Board has not said, now you have not submitted any further documents under the new general orders, and therefore, we're cutting our ties with you. They may well be in agreement with the applicant that right now is not the time for him to be spending thousands of dollars when he's facing with a, faced with a denial of his application. But if the test is a good faith effort to comply with the Water Board, I think he's done it. And I think, as he points out, those, the, the telephone messages that he left were not ten, fifteen second messages, I mean, once, two minutes, once, three minutes. He's trying to get through to Parker to say, look, or he is saying to Parker, what he thinks is relevant. We have his testimony today that he was talking about his, he supplied, submitted this tier three application. The Board of Supervisors has sent this back to us to consider new evidence. Well, the new evidence is just the documentation, the substantiation of evidence that he already supplied to us. To me, that indicates that the Board of Supervisors thinks those three phone calls are quite relevant to our decision. And yet, if we are going to make our decision based on the fact that he wasn't keeping the Planning Department informed, those phone calls would be irrelevant to our decision, because no matter what he's doing with what I call it a control board, he's not keeping the Planning Department informed. I, I think if we apply the good faith effort test in this case, and if we look to see what the Board of Supervisors is apparently treating as relevant to this decision, and if we want to avoid having this kicked back to us again, I think we better really consider what the Board of Supervisors, with a motion from Supervisor Olivera, and with a four to one vote, has sent this back to us. I think that's a clear indication those phone calls were relevant, and those phone calls had to do with good faith efforts to keep the Water Board satisfied. And then, after that, the Water Board said, it was satisfied. I think we should change our earlier decision and vote to grant the appeal.
If I based my decision just on what you said with a good faith effort, I would have to just say I deny, because he was notified in September of 2016 that he submitted the wrong tier. Nine months later, he got a second notice saying, you have never complied by submitting your tier three. So for nine months, he ignored the Water Board. That is not a good faith effort in my mind. He had to be reminded a second time, and then it took him over a month to submit the tier three at that point in time after reminder. He did submit records, per the Board of Supervisors, for us to review on the phones, and after a denial letter from the county, all of a sudden, it's time to jump through hoops. I believe in September of 2016, when he was told to go from tier two to tier three, action should have been taken, not nine months later and a second notice. I think at that point in time, action should have been taken. We sit here and talk about how the Water Board doesn't respond, but the Water Board responded to him within a week. By September 13th, they said, you are next to waterways, get it fixed, get us a tier three, and it never happened. So I'm going to stand with my original decision.
Procedurally, a question, the applicant showed us, or from the podium, showed on his cell phone an email to Madeline Flandreau with a copy of the second, the, the tier three application. I don't believe that's in our rec- I don't believe that's in our record, that email. I couldn't find it. So I'm just asking that the record will reflect that he did in fact.
Can we ask him to forward that for the record? That would be good, because you may want that, pardon me?
I don't, I don't have it.
If we could get that forwarded, it would be good so that we have it on record in case you peel this to the Board of Supervisors and they can consider that as well.
What email?
Our current procedures actually, I think, state that we can't accept, we can't accept electronic pictures. However, I mean, if he testifies that he did it and, and that's adequate to you, then that could, the testimony could make it into the, into the record.
Well, even more than that, he's offered to show it to us. He can hand us the cellphone and we can look at it.
According to our rules, you can't today do that.
Well, he can't, he can't email it to us, but he can certainly show us the visual.
In the first staff report to the Planning Commission, back when I had my first appeal with you guys, it was part of it. It was in the, the email chain between me and Madeline. It's not in it this time. I don't have that staff report with me.
So I just, I just wanna read the procedures, just so that you're aware before you make a decision. Under Section Two, Written Comments, Letters, Briefs and Other Hearing Submissions, subsection I, it says, "Screen views of photos, videos, text messages, or other documents that exist on a personal electronic device, digital camera, or computer, but which have not been downloaded and provided to the commission pursuant to the provisions of this hearing. Procedures documented shall not be considered by the commission as evidence unless a copy is provided to the clerk before the conclusion of the hearing." So if you wanna continue the hearing to allow him to do that, you could otherwise, the procedures seem to not allow it.
It's still almost nine months later. I mean, it's not gonna change.
Well, the better approach might be to find out if that first packet did in fact have an email in it. I don't have the original packet.
There are a series of emails in the original file. I did not see a email from October that was included in the packet.
Well, the NOI, or the, I'm sorry, the, the tier three application.
There is a copy of the tier three application in the first appeal file.
I can tell you.
26th of October.
26th of, was our hearing? Yeah, the resolution's in the handle.
So the only information I have in the packet from the October hearing is the series of communications between Madeline and Mr. Denham running between September 13th and September 21st.
Of 17.
Of 2017.
That's the same ones we have in this current packet.
Yes, yes. And, and that full packet was included in this, in your current packet.
And I just looked online at the staff report. It was posted in the last email in September 19th.
That was a one from the water board.
Yeah. One of those, there's one in hand from September 19th.
Right.
Okay, so procedurally, we've considered the email on his phone. And that can be heard at the Board of Supervisors, correct? And he can bring you a hard copy or not compared to what you just read? No?
We have to have a continuance as I, I mean, not a continuance, just.
If you don't wanna close, according to the rule, it just has to happen before the hearing closes. So if the commission feels it's important, they could, they could continue the hearing to allow it to come in.
I think, I think, my own feeling is, we wanna wrap this up today. We don't wanna get it back again, which we may anyhow. But to comply with our own rules, I think, is necessary so that I, I do think that we ought to keep this hearing open while we're considering other hearings and give him a chance to come back with a hard copy and submit it to us. So that, so that we don't have the problem of you wanting to submit it to the Board of Supervisors and they say, "Well, now this is other new evidence and we'll bring it back." I don't, don't want that to happen.
And you're talking about a hard copy of the email showing when it was sent to the planning department. Because we already have a copy of the tier three application.
Right, right, but yeah, exactly. The email with the attachment of the tier three application.
Okay, Mr. Denham, I'm sorry. I have to ask you to sit down for a moment, please. Mr. Denham? We'd, we'd close the public hearing and I need you to sit down while we discuss this for a moment, please. Thank you.
Perhaps the best way, oh, I'm sorry. We already have Mr. Denham's explanation and statement on the record that he did email the tier three NOI, a copy of it, to the planning department in October of 2017. That's in the record.
That's in the record.
I don't know why we have to have a hard copy of the email. There's nothing to contradict what he's told us.
I, I think particularly if, if the majority of the, of the Planning Commission accepts that as a fact, then we have a fact. And it's, it's not new evidence before the Board of Supervisors.
The fact for me is that the NOI is dated by the owners of October of 2017, so it, 16. So it wasn't done previous to that. That we know.
No, no, I mean, that, that we accept that in 2017, he submitted an email to the planning department with a copy of the tier three application. That's, that's my understanding of his testimony. And I accept that as true. The rest of us accept that as true. Well, then, it's not gonna be new evidence when it gets before the Board of Supervisors.
I believe he actually said it was October 17th, 2017.
That's fine.
I would like to see the actual email attached to our record. I don't think it takes that much effort. We could do it today. I'm sure the applicant can go out and get a printed copy within a few minutes, an hour, two hours.
We can't accept it today. We have to leave the meeting.
Mr. Williams can go down the street.
I, I think if we just wanna take a short recess, he could email it to the clerk of the Planning Commission. We could print it off and we could have it for you in five, 10 minutes.
Good. That's what I would like to see.
Let's take a 10-minute break.
You guys want the entire email chain? Cause I mean, it's, there's like 50 emails from me and Madeline, apparently not all.
This is your opportunity to submit all that evidence and if this goes forward to the supervisors, you want it on the record, so send your email.
Yeah, I'll send the whole chain.
Okay, we're gonna take a break and we'll come back at 10:50.
Madam Chair, if I could help maybe explain what we just provided to you so you don't have to go through. Most of the information is, it's already in your packet. Everything from page eight on was the emails that were included in the prior staff reports and the current staff report. It's everything between pages one and seven, which is the new information. It's in reverse chronological order. And on page seven, another page. Page four is the reference to the October 17th email in which the copy of the 2016 NOI was attached for the tier three NOI submitted in October 2016 to the water board.
And, and the department acknowledges that it was attached to that email, even though it, the email doesn't reference.
It doesn't show it, Dylan, because of the way when you respond, it typically drops off attachments. But we'll accept that as a fact.
That it was attached.
Okay.
Where, where does it say it was attached? I see you found a copy of it.
Yeah.
Doesn't say it's here.
I think, I think what Peter just said was that the indications of the attachment drop off the email, but he's willing to accept the fact that it was attached to an email.
It was attached and I took a copy of it.
Okay, good enough.
So I, I don't know if we formally, I mean, this has been submitted to us as evidence.
Yes.
And I'm, I guess we oughta just, maybe, Madam Chair, we oughta have a poll and make sure that this evidence doesn't change anybody's mind and then we can go ahead.
Are you all satisfied with this report being submitted into the record?
Yes.
And is it going to change any discussion that we need to be having?
Not for me.
So I'm gonna have.
My, my comments were made on the assumption that these facts were in existence, so I have no, nothing to add.
Commissioner Bocelli, do you need to have any discussion on it?
No.
Can you turn on your mic, please? I'm sorry.
I hope it would change yours.
Okay.
No, it's not gonna change my vote. I would hope yours might change.
I, I still have that nine months lapse. Thank you.
I guess we're not supposed to argue, so we don't have to.
You can argue with me. I'll win, but I'm just teasing. Okay, so things that, everybody has seen it, read the first seven pages that we did not have in our possession. And we're documenting that it is going into the record, so if it goes for further appeal, the supervisors have the opportunity to discuss it. It's not new evidence. I guess what I am looking for is a recommendation. We need to look at the resolution and see if there's any issues there that we need to change.
Yes, I, I do have some suggestions there. And I, I should add to my previous comments that one, one of the requirements of our urgency ordinance is not that you provide the forms and documents to the water board, but that you provide a copy of the document indicating receipt by the water board to the planning department. And with respect to the October 2016 tier three NOI, there is no indication that a copy of that document was submitted to the planning department or anything to show the planning department that the water board had received it or that it had even been mailed. And so that, to me, constitutes a reason for denial. On the, on the resolution. On page two of three, the first full paragraph that begins, "The registrant received two notices of incomplete content, et cetera." This is, this is on the findings, but what's followed seems to be more in the way of evidence. To me, it oughta read more like this. "The registrant to date has not submitted all necessary forms and documents to the Water Quality Control Board to constitute a complete application for its purposes and has not provided documentation to the planning department that he has done so." Period. End of findings. And then on the evidence, I would leave it the way it is until you get to the end of the second sentence where it talks about, "The application was incomplete as it selected an incorrect tier due to the area of land disturbance and distance to a surface water body." I would insert the following. "The applicant stated he mailed an NOI for the correct tier size to the CVRWQCB in October 2016, but the CVRWQCB has no record of receiving it. The applicant did not provide the planning department with documentation that he had submitted the tier three NOI or that the water board had received it." I would strike the next sentence. According to the planning department records at the time of denial, there was no action taken to correct this. And the rest would proceed as follows. And then I would add a sentence. "The applicant was given another opportunity to resubmit the necessary documentation in September of 2017, but did not do so."
Commissioner Royster, it's unclear to me on the, in the, the actual finding, are you keeping in the, the, the sentence in response to these notices? The appellate evidently made three phone calls.
I was not. But if we wanted to keep it in, it should say, "In response to the second notice, the appellate apparently made three phone calls."
I think that's important to be, to keep it in there because that's why it was remanded back to us, was for further.
Yeah, I, I would, I know I'm on the losing side here, but I think we should take out evidently because I think everybody accepts the fact he made those phone calls.
Correct. I would agree with you.
And then in your language, under the evidence, when you said he did not submit, I think you wanted to say, "He did not submit until whenever it was, October 2017." Oh, wait a minute, I'm getting confused. You're saying he didn't, what, what did you, were you saying he did not submit?
He did not, he did not provide the planning department documentation in October of 2016 that he had submitted.
In October 2016.
The tier three application.
Why, why don't you just say, "Before 20, whatever the date is in 2017." That, that takes in the fact that he did not submit it in 2016, but also recognizes that he did submit it in 2017.
In October.
That would be, I think that's in our documentation we just got.
No, I, I know, but I, I just, in your statement, I think.
No, I understand. But that date is in here.
Well, I think it should be stated somewhere in this resolution.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, if you just change your language to, "He did not submit until, whatever the date is, October 2017, documentation to the planning department."
I, I have a problem with.
Which was your, your, your point as well as ours?
I think it was October 17th, 2017.
Yes.
No, that would be fine.
Okay.
I, I would think we should mention this Parker letter or email of September 19th, 17th, where he said, states that the second notice of incomplete has, no longer applies. That, that should be specified in there.
If you wanna state it as, "Even though the water board was satisfied with the appellate's efforts to keep it informed, we're not," I mean, it, it's.
I'm reluctant to do that. I don't think it's a finding that's necessary to the decision. And it's not evidence that's necessary to the findings. And the fact is, he has never submitted all the required documentation.
It's just that we, we, the Board of Supervisors, I think it's helpful to the Board of Supervisors if they know what we have accepted as fact and yet made the decision in favor of the planning department so that they can go on, they, they just understand what our basis was.
Well, it wasn't that the water board accepted something over a year later without nine months of communication. That wasn't my decision.
No, I, I'm just, in the, in the evidence.
Do you want in the findings that we received the letter, a copy of a letter in October of 2017 stating that?
Well, that was, no, I, I think, I'm, I'm trying to, to build upon what, or agree with Commissioner Bocelli, that our findings ought to indicate that the water board, I mean, in layman's terms, the water board was happy, we're not. Even though the water board, I'm trying to think of the correct part of the term.
It's hard, it's hard to figure out how to word it without.
Even, even though the water board in effect canceled its second notice, whatever the title is.
Peter, can you weigh in on this, please? There seems to be some sticking ground here.
Well, it's, depends on what the majority of the commission wants in their resolution. I know that Commissioner Bocelli feels that the statement of the water board is essentially grounds for granting the appeal. And, but if you want to put something in there, I think something along the language that Mr. Lattish had, had suggested makes sense, but it depends if the majority of the board, the commission wants to include language that had effect in the resolution that is adopted.
If you proceeded by even though, then it's clear. If you proceeded by "even though," then it's clear that you're taking.
No, it's not clear. It's totally against everything that the majority of the board is ruling on, and you're going, "Even though," what you're doing is saying, "Even though those people don't agree with me, I'm still right." It's, that's how it comes across to me, and it doesn't work.
Even though the Water Board was happy, we're not, is in layman's terms. And that, the only purpose of doing that is not to try and.
The Water Board was happy five months ago, but if you ask them today, he hasn't have filed for the new state license, he hasn't done any of his cultural or environmental, so that letter might have been in compliance.
I'm sure if there's an appeal.
It's totally out of compliance now.
If there's an appeal to the Board of Supervisors, I'm sure it will be pointed out to them what we did accept, and, you know, that we accepted that the Water Board had that email indicating that as of that time, it was happy. So I won't push it any further. I don't know if Commissioner Bocelli wants to.
Let me poll the other commissioners. Do you want to put it in there? Do you want to put it in the findings and make sure that we have documented that we looked at it somehow? Because I think that's the, what he's trying to say.
Yeah, right.
Is that he wants to document that we considered it in our decision.
I don't think it's necessary. The document is in the record. It's been talked about here a lot. It doesn't say, and if you try to characterize it, you run into a problem.
Yeah, I see that.
Because I don't think it actually says the Water Board is happy. It just says, "After we receive your documentation, we can move forward with the process," which they never got.
Okay, so we have three votes not to put it in, so we don't even need to keep pounding it, so we can keep moving, correct?
Right.
Correct.
And we're acknowledging that we've seen it.
I'm not speaking for Commissioner Bocelli.
I know you're not.
I'm not speaking anymore. Just vote, get on with the next case, now, please.
Okay.
I'm serious, let's go.
We're going. Is there, are there any other changes to the resolution that need to be made?
No.
Does everybody accept the changes that Commissioner Wooster has recommended?
With the amendments from Mr. Latish regarding the notice of incomplete in the letters.
Okay. Peter, did you get all those notes?
We will be listening to the tape to make sure we get it accurately, but we have.
Okay. Would you like to read the recommendation?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2018-024 as amended, denying appeal 2016-943, thereby upholding the planning director's denial of cannabis cultivation registration 2016-943 for failure to submit a corrected notice of intent to enroll the cultivator for coverage under General Order Number R52013.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please? Second? Did you second it?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three, two. Thank you. Can you?
And this action is appealable to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days of today's date.
Thank you. Holy Christ. Okay. We will move on to item number three, appeal by, for 2016-528. Ben, you're gonna be doing the presentation for us on this one?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to hear from Ethan before we start.
As a preliminary matter, an attorney named Stephen Krynsky is here as an appearance attorney representing Mr. Tran on behalf of Mr. Weisberg, and I believe he'd like to make a statement to the commission before we begin requesting a continuance.
Okay. Would you like to come up to the mic, please?
Yes, thank you. Stephen Krynsky, K-R-I-N-S-K-Y. I agreed to make an appearance for Mr. Weisberg. I am requesting to continue this matter for a couple of weeks as I had a, I guess, a misunderstanding of what these proceedings were, and I don't believe that I could give the type of presentation that would be worth your time or worth the client's time. This is relatively humiliating to say this, but I simply do not think it is in anybody's interest to have this hearing now, and I'd ask to continue. A little background, I've been a, I was a public defender in Los Angeles for 15 years. I was a public defender up here for this last year. I've opened up my own practice. I've only done criminal matters, and I've reviewed this case. Mr. Weisberg sent me the documents a couple of weeks ago, but I had a complete misunderstanding of what was going to be happening today, and I am not, I don't feel confident that it would be right for me to make decisions that would need to be heard, so with.
Okay.
Great respect, I do ask to continue this matter.
So, you're asking for a continuance to date certain, which would be the next hearing in two weeks?
Whatever is best for everybody else.
And you're sure that Mr. Weisberg would be able to attend on that date?
I know. He indicated he was out of the country. I do not know.
So we need to go date certain, and we need to make sure he's here, because he probably won't get a second shot at a continuance.
Date certain a month.
This is the second shot. They've already asked for one continuance.
Oh, boy, I forgot about that.
I, based on his testimony, I mean, what do you guys want to do?
Well, first, I want to reassure you, we're not as hard on all counsel as you might have heard us.
Unfortunately, I haven't heard anything which does not please. I don't have this information.
This, this item was continued from January 25th.
Okay, so he can.
Why, why is, why is Mr. Weisberg not available today when this matter was continued before?
He indicated to me that he was going to be out of the country. I didn't ask for details about when and how. He mailed me information on February 14th, a packet. I reviewed the packet then. I've reviewed the packet a couple of times, and so I don't know when his trip was planned in terms of timing.
Okay, so if we think back to when Mr. Tran was before us, did he, because I can't remember this one, did he say he was going to seek counsel, or he had counsel that could not appear? Did he give us date certain based on he would get counsel, and then he did, and they couldn't be here? Or was, do you understand where I'm going with that?
Yeah. He told us that Mr. Weisberg had been retained, and that Mr. Weisberg couldn't be at that hearing, and then we reset it without consulting our Mr. Weisberg.
See, that was my concern.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's kind of poll real quick. Do you guys want to continue? Do you need to ask more questions?
Well, I certainly, I appreciate your honesty.
Yes.
And I, I don't want to put a counsel in a position where they feel that they are not prepared to represent a client sufficiently. I mean, that, that's just, that's probably a breach of ethics if you were to do that. And so I very much sympathize with you in this situation. I guess it isn't clear to me that if we continue it for two weeks that Mr. Weisberg can do it. That, if we continue it again, it needs to be to a date certain, and I don't know. Could you, can you, are you in contact with Mr. Weisberg's office?
I'm gonna let Annette speak for just one moment.
The continuance request stated that they requested that it be moved to the March 8th, 15th, or 22nd.
So he did request it. I thought so.
But if we deny a continuance today, that puts this attorney in a terrible spot.
I will guarantee that whether it's in two weeks, if it is rescheduled, I will speak with Mr. Weisberg and either myself or when, if I had a further understanding of these proceedings, which I certainly do now, and with his guidance, I certainly would be ready and make sure somebody else would be.
Okay.
If he's not here himself.
How is our schedule on those other dates?
What date are you looking at?
22nd.
We already have six.
And the day, the hearing after that?
I don't have anything down for the date after that.
I would, I think what I'd like to do is go to public comment right now, and give you guys a few minutes to think. So if we could have you sit down for just a moment, and I can reach out to public and see if they have any comment about the continuance. Does anybody here have any comment on the continuance? Captain Macedo, we're gonna be considering public comment for a continuance. Do you want to weigh in on that?
I have a comment, so that's a good option.
Thank you. Okay. I will close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners to make a decision.
I have an issue with the continuance because he asked for a specific date of continuance before. We gave it to him. His original date was in January, and now we're talking about putting it in the interval?
Okay.
Have we ever granted two continuances before?
Well, no, but we did not grant a continuance, and it ended up going to court, coming back because they didn't have proper representation. And so there is always the risk that we say, "We're sorry, we're gonna have this hearing here today," and then he takes it to court, and they say, "You know what? Nope, you're gonna take it back." Yep.
I think on any continuance, we consider both the applicant, the Planning Department, and the commission itself. I would tend to continue it to the meeting after the next meeting. If the Sheriff's Department does not have an objection to that, and that you or somebody from the Sheriff's Department would be available, I really appreciate your self-containment after sitting here for a long time to not make a comment on this continuance. But do you have any preference as far as dates since you, you would have to be here or somebody from your department have to be here?
No, I would just ask, no, I would just ask that you set a firm date and hold to it, and then if I can't make it, I'll send it to S. N.
Okay. I would tend to go to two meetings from now, just to start filling up that agenda. And to make sure that Mr. Weisberg is indeed back.
But that's still business. Sure, Mr. Weisberg will be back.
No, but it gives him a chance to, to arrange for either this counsel to be prepared or someone else.
I'd like to poll everybody. Commissioner Wooster, do you want to continue it to a date certain or have the hearing today?
I think we should continue it.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk?
I think we don't have a choice. I don't want to have to come back, but I really don't want to grant it either.
Okay. Commissioner Bocelli?
I don't think any of us wants to grant it, but I'm afraid we probably should.
Okay. That's three votes. Your vote kind of doesn't matter, but you want to give your opinion?
I already did.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's take a motion on continuance to date certain. Can, before we do that, can you, can you talk to your client and make sure that when we hit date certain, it's gonna work for him, and let's make sure that he feels he'll be able to have his counsel here?
And that would be with the date?
April 12th or 26th?
April 12th.
Either of those dates.
Okay. And if counsel can't be here, do you think you can educate yourself enough to present?
I either will myself, or I'll make sure.
Okay, we're gonna hold you to that. All right.
I'm already familiarated. I've never made a counsel, so I think.
Thank you. Okay, so I need a motion, please.
I move that this matter be continued until April 12th as a date certain of the last continuance in this matter.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, I think we need to take out, no matter what kind of thing, because that could be a real problem in the future. Anything could happen.
Date certain.
Thank you. Okay, and I get my second renewed based on that?
I'm not seconding that motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Yeah, I thought Bocelli seconded.
He decided not to when I had amended his motion.
When he amended it, I withdrew my second.
So we carried, the motion carries to continue to April 20, or 12th, five, five to zero, I believe. Commissioner Bocelli, you voted, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll see you and your client or Mr. Weisberg on April 12th. Thank you very much. And we're not looking to humiliate. Now we know you, and we'll see you in the future.
You can doubt us in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we're gonna go to the appeal by Chris Johnston, 2016-965, and it looks like we have Miguel doing a presentation. And this item was continued from February 22nd, 2018. Do we have any requests for a continuance again?
No.
Okay. So just so that we're clear, Miguel will give a 15-minute presentation, and we would potentially, commissioners, ask him questions. We will go to you for your 15-minute presentation as well. So if you don't want to stand there while he presents, you have the option of sitting. Just giving you the option. Morning.
Good morning. This is Miguel with the Planning Department. I'm here to present appeal 2016-965. Just a quick location. It's a, property is located at 6411 Haver Road in McCollum Hill. This project was denied for three reasons, one of which is violation of 17.95.165.10, having inadequate fencing and inadequate lock, all in all an unsecure cultivation site. It was also denied for violation of 17.95.165.1I for inadequate or inappropriate posting. And lastly, for 17.95.165.17.8.2 of other violations of local or state law. Just a quick summary. On January 14th, 2017, Code Compliance conducted an inspection on the cultivation site. There was multiple violations that were found, one of which was inadequate fencing. As if, if you look at the presentation, you could see inadequate fencing. There was inadequate lock. Code Compliance felt that this lock is, was inadequate. Inappropriate posting. It was, I believe it wasn't near the ingress of the cultivation area as county or urgency ordinance requires. Unpermitted structure and unpermitted grading. On January 25th, 2017, Code Compliance emailed a list of corrections to the registrant. This email was acknowledged by the registrant stating that they'll get to work on it. The deadline for this was February 14th. That's their 10-day deadline that Code Compliance gave them. However, Code Compliance did not receive any proof of corrections by February 4th. On February 15th, Code Compliance emailed the registrant asking them if they had any updates on what was going on. The registrant did not reply to this email until February 21st. The registrant explained that they had not contacted us sooner because I believe it was due to a funeral that the registrant had to attend. Code Compliance responded and asked if they had any proof of the corrections, any contracts, any permits submitted with the building department or Public Works regarding the grading or the unpermitted structure. The appellant stated that they did have proof, however, they never submitted any proof of this. The next time Code Compliance heard anything from the appellant, it was August 2nd. The appellant was explaining to Code Compliance that the reason they hadn't been able to get the grading permits or the building permits is because I believe that the registrant had a falling out with a partner, which the partner ended up taking all the product, cannabis, and leaving them without money to pursue this. Subsequent to the denial of this project on January 12th of this year, planning staff or the planning department received a notification from the water board indicating that the appellant's NOI was terminated. Looking into it, on September 6th of 2016, the registrant submitted a NOI for two parcels that are abutting. On October 27th, 2016, the water board sent a notice of incomplete NOI to the registrant indicating that they were missing a site management plan, cultural resource inventory, and insufficient funds for a tier-three cultivation registration. On July 11th, 2017, the water board sent out a second notice indicating that the site management plan was still missing. And lastly, on January 12th of 2018, Code Compliance, or not Code Compliance, the water board issued a notice of termination of NOI due to the registrant not having submitted all the required documentations for enrollment. On January 19th, planning staff contacted Michael Parker who confirmed that the registrant had not submitted the required documentation. The urgency ordinance requires submission of all necessary forms and documents to constitute a complete application by the water board by September 7th, 2016. As of January 12th of 2018, 16 months beyond the deadline, the registrant has failed to comply with the water board. This in turn is a violation of 17.95.165.10, which is the requirement to comply with the water board. That's it for my presentation. If you have any questions?
A couple. The appellant is Chris Johnston. Does she appear as a co-applicant?
She doesn't appear as a co-applicant, however, she is a landowner.
She is a landowner on this, on this parcel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is she on the registration application?
She's on the registration application as a landowner.
I've got a couple of questions because what I'm seeing in the documentation doesn't correspond exactly to the staff report in some respects. The staff report on page two is a paragraph that begins on February 21, 2017. The registrant contacted Code Compliance, explained it due to a funeral. He was not able to communicate with Code Compliance sooner. When I look at the file, I do see an email of February 19th that discusses he's been out of town since Tuesday attending a funeral. Is that the email it's referred to?
Yes, I believe that was a typo on my part.
Okay. Then it says Code Compliance responded to this email by asking the registrant to submit any contracts slash arrangements, et cetera. And I don't see in my file any response. Have you got one?
I believe there is a response. I might have overlooked and not submitted it with the staff report. I could certainly go and see if I could dig it up if you'd like.
Probably would be a good thing for the record. Then there's an email of May 24th, 2017, to Mr. Watts from BDB, and it just says, "Subject, gate and fence completed." And that's all I see. Is there a response to that in your file? Because I don't have one.
I believe that that email is regarding a separate project. I believe. So currently I'm working with what I received from Code Compliance in terms of the record. I believe Thomas Watts is here if he'd like to chime in on this.
We can wait till he comes up. A couple more questions. Do you know, at the time of the January 24th, 2017, Code Compliance inspection, were there live medical cannabis plants at the cultivation area?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Do you know if there was live medical cannabis plants on the cultivation area on January 24th?
No, I don't think there was. I think it was just pots, from memory.
I'm sorry, ma'am. You have to wait until it's your turn to speak. Please make notes.
Yeah, it was just empty pots at the time of the inspection. Oh, no, actually, no, sorry. There were a few inside a, I guess it's kind of like a hoop house, just kind of little seedlings.
So there were some?
Yeah.
In the hoop house, you said?
In, it was more of a small fenced area with some plastic over the top.
Do you recall if the fence area had a lock on it?
I think that one did.
Are you done, first, at the moment?
Go ahead.
The, did you receive any proof of adequate fencing that was done at any time during the 2017 cultivation period?
No, I don't believe so. From my records, I sent an email on February 21st asking for some proof of corrections, but never received a reply to that. I think that's what you discussed earlier.
So never, it means never. You never, you never received further proof. Okay. Thank you.
And then the other email that was mentioned, I think Miguel mentioned it, I think it refers to another, another cultivation site. The registrant had at least three, and we were communicating about different sites within the same email chain, I suppose.
Okay.
This, while you're there, Mr. Watts, this email that says, has a subject, gate and fence completed dated May 24th of 2017, does that pertain to this cultivation?
I don't have a copy here, but I don't think it does.
You think it's with respect to the other one?
Yes, probably.
If I understand what you just said, that this landowner is involved with at least three sites, and we have two sites before us today, is that correct?
Yeah, and there's a third one, which I think they did correct everything for.
Just to make sure I'm clear on the record, when you visited the site on January 24th of 2017, there were some live cannabis plants there, correct?
Yeah.
Were they enclosed by a fence?
They were. They were in a separate, small area that was being used as a sort of nursery, I suppose.
And there was a fence around that area?
Yes.
Did it have a lock on the gate?
I think so, yeah.
Were there any other live medical cannabis plants during the time of that inspection at this site, other than those that were in a fence?
No, it was all just empty pots elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have questions?
Yeah, I do have one. There's an email from the registrant of February 19th of 2017 that seems to say that they will fence and lock as they complete or plant whichever comes first, complete the construction or plant whichever comes first. Do you know if they did that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and allow Mrs. Johnston to come up and present her case. And now could you set the clock for her, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to point out that on the paperwork from the planning, the registrant is not who the emails were coming from, and that's not who applied for the paperwork to the water board. It was not us. So when they say that the registrant said the registrant, that was not us. We were not notified of this. We are the landowners. We should have been notified of this.
So the regist, Bobby Johnston?
That's my husband.
Was not the registrant?
Not, and when they're saying that all these, they accepted all these.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, originally.
Right. We did register, me and my husband registered.
Registered.
And then we took in the partners.
Yeah.
And they did all the paperwork. They're the ones who filed for the water board and everything like that. But we were not notified as landowners. It went to them as our partners. So being landowners, we should have been notified of everything that wasn't compliant.
Okay, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Miguel to look at the registration paperwork and see if we have two different addresses for the registration?
We have the registrant's mailing address as 26250 Industrial Boulevard in Hayward.
Okay.
The registrant's physical address as 6411 Haver Road.
And what do you have for landowner?
Landowner, I have PO box 193 San Andreas.
Is that correct?
The PO box in San Andreas is.
Okay.
But then again, the first paragraph, when it says, "On June 30th, Bobby Johnston submitted an application," it doesn't say anything about Jerry Chen. And the address that they have listed in industrial way, everything went to a PO box in Mokeel. I got proof right here from the water board, PO box, Mokeel.
But that's the address they gave the water board, not necessarily the address they gave us.
And, well.
Who's the letter addressed to on the PO box?
John Codoti, which is the 42nd group, which is not Bob and I.
Who is that?
He was our partner.
Was he on the registration?
Jerry was, John was not.
Miguel, who all is listed on the registration itself?
So it is Johnston and Chen, so it's Bobby Johnston on behalf of Johnston and Chen.
Okay, so Bobby Johnston is a representative of two people?
Of Johnston and Chen is a.
Or a partnership or whatever?
It's a, I believe it's a corporation.
It's an LLC, yes.
LLC.
LLC. Okay, so Bobby Johnson is the only, Johnston, excuse me, is the only, my wife's maiden name was Johnston.
Got to remember that, too.
I'm going to be careful here. Bobby Johnston was the only individual listed on the registration.
Correct.
And the address for that, for the registrant?
It's 26250 Industrial Boulevard in Hayward.
Okay.
And who signed that?
Bobby Johnston for Johnston and Chen.
Do you have a copy of your registration?
I do not.
Okay. So as she's stating that we have letters that are written to people that are not on the registration, why would we send a letter to somebody that's not on the registration? We did not. She stated the water board did, not us.
Yeah, it was the water board. Because that was one of the reasons that we were denied, was the water board.
So what is your issue, what is your issue with addresses and names? Let me, I just need to get this clear in my head.
Well, because like Tom Watts said, he was accepting emails, but it wasn't from Bob, it was from John, as far as the property, 6411. He should have been talking to Bob, not John.
Did John, or did you designate John as a representative of any kind or sort?
Just to fill out the paperwork, which was a big mistake, as far as the water board, because he did it.
And so as the registrant, you would have to, your husband would have had to look over the paperwork and sign it and approve of all of it?
He did not.
So what you're saying is this registration should be denied based on the fact that you did not sign the paperwork and approve of it?
Well, I think we should have been more involved. I think that things should have came to us, because Miguel knows I was in planning, I was in contact with planning all the time.
But what you're telling me is we have falsely signed documentation that we shouldn't have accepted. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that at all.
That people signed applications that they shouldn't have?
Well, I'm, well, I'm not saying that they had no right to. I think we should be able to reapply on the way with us, just us, without having anybody else on there, because they did it not knowing. You know, they, they submitted false information.
I just need to make sure I'm real clear on this. You're telling me that you hired him to do paperwork for you?
We did not hire him.
Okay.
Jerry hired him.
Who's Jerry?
He was our partner.
But not on the registration?
Not on the registration.
So Jerry was authorized to be able to have people do paperwork for him?
He was, but not through, not according to Bob and I.
But you, you and your husband never submitted any materials to the water board? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, it's signed by you with your address?
Correct. And nothing came back to the water, from the, when the water board mailed us every denial, it never came to Bob and I at our mailing address.
But that's because you didn't submit it to the water board, correct?
Yes, exactly, because I didn't submit it to the water board.
Did you, okay, but are you a registrant or a landowner?
Bob is the registrant. I'm on the registration and the landowner.
Okay. And there is a partner involved?
There was a partner involved. That's like Miguel just said.
And you removed the partner from the application?
Yes. He has a letter. And corrected.
And what date was that done? I'm sorry, I need you to come up to the mic and identify yourself.
It was a mistake taken on his partner.
And you are?
I am Bob Johnston.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so what we did is we were just going to let it go. I'm done. I've wasted so much money in this issue. So what we did do is we managed to get him off of the register.
Okay, I'm going to stop you, I'm going to stop you right there for one second. Miguel, do you have notice of him being removed from the registration?
Yes, I do. He removed himself from the registration on September 5th, 2017.
Perfect. Okay, keep going.
Okay, and after he was removed, we proceeded to correct every issue, which we have done.
Even with the water board?
Water board is the only issue where, and we are dealing with them right now.
The only thing we have to submit for the water board, because we've complied with everything. We've done the site management plan, we've done the, everything that they've asked. The only thing we have to do is file a new NOI. Because if you look at the emails from the water board, some of the, it's paid right here, it says, because you see there's a letter dated October 27th, 2016, when they write us up for a site management plan and the cultural resource inventory. Then you see the next letter.
You said they wrote us up, but that technically, that was to the partner or the gentleman that's in charge has anything to do with you.
Correct, correct.
But you never, ever filed for anything in your name?
No. It was under the LLC.
Not as far as this, not as far as this site. And then July 11th?
Let's keep it to this site.
Yeah, this site. And then the second notice, same thing. And we were only written up for no site management plan, and the site has been determined, which we weren't wrote up for in the first letter.
Now, we've been asking you with a barrage of questions. Do you want to make a presentation or you want to continue on a question and answer? Now, we've been asking you with a barrage of questions, do you want to make a presentation, or you want to continue on a question and answer?
That's really, do you want to say anything else?
I don't, we don't want to-
I agree.
-hamper the way you want to present your case.
Is there something that you want us to know that you have not had an opportunity to say to us?
All I can say is we weren't gonna proceed until we got this guy off of the registration. And once we got him off the registration, all we knew of was the correction notices that we received from code compliance.
Okay, and do you have a letter from code compliance, say you're certified and fixed everything, and you got everything permitted, and all these other issues are correct?
We have been working with Miguel, my wife has, been working with Miguel, because we were not gonna proceed, which they let us proceed once Jerry took that off of there. Once we got rid of the Chen, we were working with Miguel, and we have done everything. We have grading permit-
Did code compliance sign off? And say that they're, no?
No. Code compliance has only been out there the one time.
Okay, they go once, they send you a correction list, you take pictures and say we fixed it, and they say okay. Did you ever get the okay, or, because the denial includes those items, the code compliance issues? So it's not just water board, there's other code compliance issues in here that are being addressed?
The last email I received from code compliance was, we have turned it over to the planning department. So we began working with the planning department.
Was the letter to the planning department a denial, a recommendation for denial from code compliance for not coming into compliance?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so the letter, the email that you got, that you're looking at, that says we've turned it over to the planning department, basically means we're no longer dealing with it, we've sent a recommendation to have, for a denial. So they proceeded forward with those items not being corrected, giving you your denial, is the way that I'm seeing this happening. Okay, so as it stands right now, and I'm giving, this is your time to present, not our time to interrupt you, and I apologize for that. There were correction notices issued. Do you want to present on how you corrected each issue, and this is your chance to debate code compliance and say, he is wrong, we did correct these items, here's an email where we sent all the pictures, he just didn't acknowledge it, or he didn't get it, but I can prove we followed through. This is your opportunity to present to us your case, and to prove the county wrong. You are in control right now of making sure that you can say everything they gave us, you can debate it.
And you have the burden of proof, so this is a-
Okay, well, I'm not, we did get the letter, that's of things that needed to be fixed.
Okay.
We had 10 days to fix it. We didn't get Jerry off, Jerry didn't comply with, and we were supposed to give him $50,000 to get his name off the partnership. We weren't gonna complete those until Jerry was gone.
Now Jerry is Jerry Chen?
Right.
Okay, I'm, it's getting, getting through.
We, we just, like he said, we gave up putting money into something that we didn't know what was gonna happen. I mean, he took everything once, and, you know, we were done, like he said. So why, you know, and it's all fixed now, and-
But it wasn't fixed in the 10 days.
Right here, I got a letter from Tom, an email, says, "Good morning, all. We are now beyond the 10-day deadline. Do you have an update on this site?" So he acknowledged, they gave us 10 days, and he's saying right here, do we, does he have an update?
Here's my point. This was months later, when we were working with the planning department, who let us proceed after well beyond the 10 days. I put thousands and thousands of dollars after they said that we could proceed. I took the grading permit, I have the building permit, I did everything, more money. Why would you let us proceed?
And take money?
After the 10 days, if that's the issue?
So where are these permits that you say you did, the photographs?
We have all the permits.
Where are they? We, I haven't seen them.
Grading permits?
Yeah. Where are the photographs of the fence? That's what we're asking you for.
The fence was never, it was a lock, was the issue.
No, I'm sorry, sir, there's a whole series of items, half a dozen of them. The locks, the posting of the sign, the grading, I don't know what all. And it's your job right now to show us proof that you did it. Your job was to have shown the proof a long time ago.
But the grading still would have had to been permitted and completed regardless. And so would the building permit, would have had to been received and completed regardless of the registration.
Sure, I understand that.
Oh, that's- I can go over to the department and get a copy of the grading permit that we applied for.
Miguel, did you get acknowledgement that the grading permit was processed and applied for during the 10 days?
Uh, not during the 10 days.
So it was after the fact. Okay, I'm gonna, can I interrupt your presentation for just one moment?
Sure.
At what point did the planning department decide that their correction notice didn't matter? And we were gonna go ahead and let them process, continue without the other applicant?
Well, it's not exactly as it's described. When somebody comes to my counter and says, "Code compliance issued me a correction notice, and I need to get a grading permit and a building permit." Okay, very well, this is what you do, this is how you obtain them. However, nobody told me, or the appellant or registrant did not tell me that code compliance issued me a 10-day notice four months ago, and now I'm trying to come into compliance. That wasn't the case. So if somebody comes to my counter and says, "How do I get a building permit?", this is how you get a building permit.
They didn't speak about the registration?
It didn't speak about the, they were beyond the 10-day deadline.
And you did not, did, you did not know them previously from removing a registrat- from the application?
No, because that was around August, correct, when you were working on your building or grading permit? Or was it after Chen?
It was after.
We only did it after you received the note from Chen that he was possibly-
And you should have a copy in your file of the grading permit, but I went, because I came right over from to your office and gave you a copy. Gina took a copy and put it in the file.
But once more, you know, the point is that when somebody asks me, "How do I obtain a grading permit or a building permit?", it's my obligation to tell them how. If they say code compliance is instructing me to do this, it's my obligation to tell them how. However, they never told me that it was way beyond their 10-day deadline.
Okay, so if we, I understand how you said go ahead and get a building permit, that makes sense to me. But I want to go back to the point where they have a code compliance notice, after the fact of that, and code compliance makes a recommendation to the planning department, we remove a registrant's name and continue with these owners? Is that a correct statement?
We're continuing with the LLC, not the individuals.
Even after the correction notice was sent and a recommendation of a denial, we allow a name to come off the record and keep processing?
The name was never on the registration. The name was part of the corporation. The registrant is the corporation. Bobby Johnston signed on behalf of the corporation. Jerry Chen does not appear as a registrant on the-
That's what I needed to hear.
So what was taken off?
Jerry Chen was, removed himself from the corporation. I believe it-
But the registrant is still the corporation?
Correct.
Even though Jerry Chen, whose name is part of the corporation, isn't, he himself is no longer part of the corporation?
Correct.
But it has nothing to do with the registration application or the ownership application?
The registrant is still the corporation.
So there is nothing that we did approving of Mr. Chen being removed besides their corporation paperwork? It had nothing to do with the registration paperwork?
Correct.
Okay, does that make sense?
No, because Jerry is the LLC.
Okay, but the LLC is the applicant?
Not, Bob and I, we are not an LLC. That was Jerry, he brought the LLC in.
It doesn't really matter, the corporate entity is the applicant. And people within the corporate entity can change, but the corporate entity stays the same.
I understand that part, and I'm good with that. What I'm having a struggle with is that I have an appellant here who's telling me that the planning department allowed, after code compliance recommended a denial, for somebody to come off of the LLC, and they were allowed to continue with growing in their registration. That's the statement they're making. So I'm asking for clarity on that, and-
So I think you're concerned about the procedure of, you know, at what point in time does, when we get a recommendation for denial from the, from code, why would it take so much time, and why would we allow other activity to occur regarding that registration after? You know, it's just a matter of time and the workload. You know, there were 740-some registrations. We would receive, you know, emails from code saying, you know, we're, you know, this one passed, or this one failed. We would simply print it, put it in the file, save it electronically, and continue working on the one that we worked on at that point in time. At such time as we picked up that file, we'd go back and look at it. In some cases, it was many months later, it was the case here. It was a recommendation for denial, and, you know, we finally got to this registration application, looked at the record, and we said, well, you know, we don't have the NOI, well, there was a recommendation for denial, there's no record of them ever having corrected it, so that was when we made our decision to deny this application. The fact that other activity occurred in the meantime, we don't, we don't have the ability to sort of keep in our mind every one of these registration applications. You know, sometimes there, you know, we do know, oh, I remember that one because I'd, you know, met the counter with the person, but, you know, there's several people in our office that are handling the paperwork. And it may have been simply an office tech that received the emails off our, we had, we have a, an email address that is general that all the staff can access, that code and other departments will send information regarding registrations to, and depending on who's assigned that date to be downloading that, those emails, they simply take it, they put it in the file, without stopping what they're doing and working on, you know, that specific file at the time they do it. So we're just trying to keep the files updated with the information. And it, again, it's been several months in some cases, that we get back to that file and look at that, that email from code saying, oh, this one was denied. So unless new information had come in the meantime, from code saying, oh, we now receive new information, they complied with all the requirements, we're, we now recommend approval, you know, that wouldn't necessarily change the situation.
Okay. If I was coming in to update my LLC, and you pull the file, and they're telling you that a name has been removed, and they're resubmitting that paperwork, at that point in time, you wouldn't have looked at the file and went, well, you know, I know you're, I understand what you're trying to do, but right now you've been recommended for a denial. You wouldn't have done that?
No.
Okay, because it wasn't processed to that, that point. Okay. The second thing was, I'm just gonna, to you, on the, under the urgency ordinance, there's several different issues in here that I see that are a problem. When you updated your LLC, under the urgency ordinance, the requirement is on you to also update your address for contact.
I did that.
Okay.
I told them, I want everything to come to Bob and I, at PO Box 195.
Okay, and also under that would have been your responsibility to keep the water board and anybody else updated with your address, which obviously that outreach was not completed, because they mailed to the old person and address. The other issue that you have is that you told me you went ahead and applied for permits for the unpermitted building that you built, the grading that was done without permits?
Yes.
Okay, I understand that. Rather, you are a cultivator or not, if code compliance comes out and says you have unpermitted buildings, and you have grading that's been done without permits, doesn't matter who you are, if I do that, I still have to get permitted. So whether you're a cultivator or not, that permitting process still would be upon you to be completed and taken care of.
And I agree with you.
Thank you for doing that. It's, all of these issues, this is so, it's complicated, in my mind, and I'm trying to straighten it out in my mind. So the water board denial, how did you find out about that? Through the denial letter from the county?
Yes.
Yes, okay. It's pretty unfortunate, because I can see what's taking place here now. I see that you guys tried to come into compliance in every way. Obviously, there was some sort of a falling out that is not any of our business, that's between you personally. But in the process of that falling out, the partner and you, you guys have been damaged in this process, because the county has continued with the urgency ordinance. The person that damaged you knew the rules and the guidelines, and unfortunately, knew them probably better than you and left you holding a bag. And we've had a lot of sympathy cases before us, far worse than this one, that, I mean, it's like, ugh, it's terrible. But we are held to this standard up here that says, here's the urgency ordinance, and this is what we have to rule on. And before us right now is that we had permit issues that weren't taken care of right away, within the 10-day period, or at least started. So during that 10 days, you should have applied for the permits or the grading, shown some proof of evidence that I am working towards completing these items, even though we know in 10 days you could never accomplish it.
Right.
But it should have been started during that 10 days, and it wasn't, according to emails that were before us. The, the name issue, the partner issue, that's all personal, we don't get to rule on that. And unfortunately, with the water board and you not getting notification to be able to correct it, that's not on us. That's, and it's not very nice, and I apologize. I mean, that's not something we can fix for you. So that's where I'm at right now, and I guess what I'm doing is just kind of playing this out in my head and trying to understand it better, so that we can give you one last opportunity to come back at us with some evidence to say, but, we did meet the deadlines, and that's what we're looking for, is proof. So if you can add anything to it that would help us in our decision-making process, we're listening.
One thing I'd add to your comments is, as far as I can tell, there was never a valid application made to the water board, because they never made it.
I have a question to that, just so I could understand totally. Whose name is on the application? Is it Bobby Johnston and the LLC, or is it just Bobby Johnston?
On the application for cannabis registration?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be Bobby Johnston on behalf of Johnston and Chen LLC.
Okay, thank you.
And along those lines, you were notified that Chen was no longer a part of the corporation, correct?
Chen removed himself. Chen submitted a letter to the planning department, removing himself from the corporation.
Well, he, he at least informed you that he had, he was removed from the corporation?
Correct.
So, but the registrant continued to be Bobby Johnston on behalf of the corporation, even though Chen was no longer a part of it?
Correct.
But back to what I was saying, I have, I have a real problem with the fact that you're responsible for the filings with the water board. I understand they were made by somebody else. And of course, then that person was the person that was getting the responses from the water board. But it gets back to your basic responsibility to comply with our ordinance?
Right.
Which is making an application to the water board by a certain time. And you're telling us you did not, somebody else did it supposedly acting on your behalf, but without your authorization?
On behalf of the 42nd group, which was not us.
So, but, but you never made an application to the water board?
Correct.
And that, to me, is a, that's not compliance with the ordinance. That's my problem.
Do you have questions?
Oh, yeah, a lot. Since we're on the water board, we have an NOI that's stamped "Received by the Planning Department" on September 6th of 2016 in this file, with the cultivator's name being 42nd Calaveras LLC. Now, what's that?
That was Jerry Chen.
So that was not your registrant corporation?
That was the name of our business.
Okay, and it's signed, I can't tell who signed it, it's a scribble. You got, neither you nor your husband submitted this, correct?
No.
No, you signed it, though.
Okay.
And Jerry, that's, the JC below it is Jerry Chen.
So where is the NOI from the registrant? Which is Johnston and Chen? Where is the NOI from them to the water board?
It was never-
So there was never one?
Nope. It was on behalf of the 42nd group.
Which is not you guys?
Which was Jerry.
Which was Jerry, okay, got it. Now, who, whose post office box was PO Box 195 in McCallum Hill?
Jerry Chen, which is John Codoti also.
Okay, now, so do you, well, I guess you wouldn't know, but- Okay, now, so, do you, well, I guess you wouldn't know, but I'll ask the question. When they submitted the original NOI, they did list PO Box 193 in San Andreas with the 95249 zip code. That's on the original NOI. That's your guys' post office box, right?
That is for the other, our land.
That's your ground. That's your field.
Not, not the one we're talking about, but that is my address, but that's not the land we're talking about. Well, we're listed as the landowners.
That's correct.
And with our address, yes.
Okay. So where did this, who's had, who, who had the PO Box 195?
That would be the Forty-Second Group in Moke Hill.
Okay, now, who is John Cadoti? How is he connected?
He was Jerry's, Jerry brought him in. He was Jerry's partner.
There, there are a number of emails that go to him.
Right.
Now, are you, are you, are you telling us that he had, he had no authority to act on behalf of your corporation?
Not as far as Bob and I were concerned.
Okay.
We had no knowledge.
So let's, let's go back then to the original January 25th, 2017, notification from Thomas Watts of Code Compliance of the list of corrections. It looks like that went to Good Morning Bobby and John. So did you get that?
I got the, a copy of it, yeah, but that went to just John's email, because if you look at the email, that's not Bob's email. Right there. Good morning Bobby and John. I have it, but that's John's email.
Well, the copy I have doesn't say who it's to, actually. It just says, Thomas Watts wrote, Good morning Bobby and John. But you got a copy of it?
I, I have it right here in the file.
Okay, then there's a, then there's an email from John Cadoti, the same day. It says, "We will begin making the proper corrections immediately." Did you get that?
Yeah, it's right here. I did not get it, no.
When did you get the copy of the email from Thomas Watts of January 25th with the list of corrections?
I, I never received a...
John did.
Why, why is it that John would be getting emails from Thomas Watts if he's, if he's not, if he's not authorized to do so by your corporation? I mean, how is this happening?
Chen authorized it.
And Chen was a part, was part of your corporation at that time?
Yes.
Okay. So the corporation registrant authorized John Cadoti to get these emails. Okay, now we got that straight. And then he says...
Can I break in for a second?
Sure.
I don't, I mean, Chen was not the registrant, but he was part of the corporation.
Part of the corporation.
Yeah.
Okay, then it says, "We'll begin making the proper corrections immediately." Okay.
Because Tom did text and say, here's the list of the things that need to be done, and that was on January 25th, 2017.
Right. So let's just take those. Let's take the, the permit, first of all, says, "Once the fence gap slash gate has been completed, the posting should be moved to within ten feet of the entrance to the cultivation area." Now, at that time, January 24th, were there live medical cannabis plants at this site?
Yes.
Was there a fence around them?
Yes.
Yes.
And was the permit posted within ten feet of the entrance?
Yes.
You could see it from the pictures, you could see.
It's right next to the gate.
So Mr. Johnston, I can't have you speak from a chair. You have to either be up at the mic. Okay. I'm, I'm, you're welcome to come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so you're, you're telling, was Mr. Watts then mistaken when he wrote that the posting should be moved to within ten feet?
It's right there. Do you see?
Well, we can't tell.
We can't tell.
You can see where the pots are, right there.
I don't see any plants in those pots. Well, was it within ten feet of the co, of the area that you had fenced at that time with plants in it?
It's within four feet of the gate. That sign is right there.
And how, okay, and where are the plants with respect to the gate?
The plants are inside in a little greenhouse, being prepared to...
Within that, within that fence?
Yes.
So you're telling us that the citation, to the effect that you should move the posting to within ten feet, that was an error?
I believe so.
And it was already within ten feet?
We have not ever changed it. It's still there.
Bear with me for a second. I forget stuff after I write down. Okay, now, the fencing. Is it, is it correct, then, that the, there was a fence around the only live medical cannabis plant that you had on that site on January 24th?
Yes.
Did it have a gate?
It had a gate.
Yes.
Did it have a lock on the gate?
It's a wire gate, the same as a fencing. It's concrete wire, seven foot tall.
Did it have a lock on the gate?
It did. Too small.
Too small?
Too small. So we changed the lock.
And was that replaced?
Yes.
When was it replaced?
The next day.
Okay, was there any proof sent to Code Compliance that you replaced it?
Obviously not. John was dealing with that.
Okay, now, you, you have to understand that when John is acting on behalf of the corporation registrant, you're kind of stuck with it.
I, I understand that.
We do. Big mistake on our part.
Okay, so we placed the lock the next day. But no notice to Code Compliance that you did that, correct?
Correct.
All right. Okay, now, other than, other than the, the plants that you had there on January 24th, did you plant more plants later?
The plants that we had there were in a small area, and they're babies. So we have to get them bigger before we can plant them. So we filled every one of those spots eventually.
Okay. Now, was there ever a time where you had live medical cannabis plants at this cultivation area, then when there wasn't a fence around them?
Never.
So you're telling us there was always a fence around any live marijuana plants you had on this site?
Correct.
Six feet tall?
Seven foot tall.
With a gate and a lock?
The gate was the wire, which says...
Same gate?
It's same gate, yes, and a lock.
All right. The grading, the grading permit, when, when did you obtain the grading permit?
I don't remember the exact date we applied. I can go over and get a copy of it.
She's got it. Hold on one second, please.
It's dated 9/13/17.
And did you provide a copy of that grading permit to the Code Compliance people?
I gave a copy to the building department and to Miguel.
And when did you give it to the planning department? Same day?
I went right from where I got the permit, where the application and the receipt for the permit, right over to building and planning.
What was that date?
September 13th.
Of what year?
2017.
Seventeen. Okay, on, with respect to the hoop house and the container, were there permits obtained for those?
Yes.
And when were they obtained?
We just recently received a...
3/5/18?
Yes.
For both?
Look at the gate, we'll be starting again.
AJ, when was the date?
There should be another, should be one more paper. Should be on the top. There was a loose paper.
Of 2017.
Yes.
That, that is the date of what?
That's when we first applied to get the permit or the plans for the hoop houses? And the permit for the cargo, the, the picture they have of the...
The container?
Yeah, the container.
Did, was that all of the same timeline?
Yes.
So you applied in August of last year and got the permits of March of this year?
Right.
Am I correct that the first notice you got, you, you being your corporation at the Box 193 address, from the water board, was a termination notice in January of this year?
We did not receive anything from the water board. The, the way we found out was through planning when we got our denial letter. There is a letter in there from the water board that says, John Cadoti slash Bob Johnston, but John is not on my PO box here in San Andreas, so they sent it back.
Okay. That's where I was looking for. So the water board sent a letter out. They sent it to the correct post office address, which was PO Box 193 in San Andreas, but it was addressed to John Cadoti and Bobby Johnston both, and so it didn't get to you.
It didn't get to me, because they rec, they seen John Cadoti first and sent it back. And when I talked to the water board, and was, and I heard from the county, and I asked them, why were they sending all the letters to the Moke Hill post office box instead of, even if they sent them to the Moke Hill box, why didn't Bob and I get a copy, being the landowners? And she said, we got numerous letters back that they'd sent out to the Moke Hill box, and they all came back. Because John had moved by that time and shut the box down also.
When, when did he move?
Oh, gosh. It was the beginning of last, oh, two years ago? And I even went to the Moke Hill post office to see if I could get proof of when he moved, and they couldn't tell me.
Okay, now, on, on this water board issue, if I'm understanding this correctly, there has never been an app, a notice of intent submitted on behalf of Johnston and Chen, the LLC. Is that correct?
Only in the Forty-Second Group's name, which apparently, that's us. But now it's dissolved.
But apparently, it's not you.
But yet, they accepted money on behalf, and if you look at, they submitted the wrong APN number even.
They being Mr. Chen?
Or, yeah. John on behalf of...
Excuse me. One question. Who, who's money was submitted?
Uh, Jerry's.
Can I ask you a question? On that subject, the, the September 4th, 2016, notice of intent, tier three. Are you with me?
Yes.
It says Forty-Second Calaveris LLC on it, and it mentioned the wrong assessor's parcel number.
For one parcel.
This one mentions both, 012 and 028.
That's one of those parcels, the APN number's wrong on one, and we didn't even have a cannabis site on one parcel. There was never any cannabis site on one.
This particular one that we're talking about now is 012.
Yes.
And this notice of intent said, Forty-Second Calaveris, signed by Bobby Johnston and, I think Chen is the other one?
Right.
Does show both of those APNs, the 012 for this one, and the 028 for the other application. So I don't...
The, the APN number is supposed to be 016024012.
But Bobby signed this one.
He did.
I have any other questions? Be good.
Sure.
Going back to the email, that was to John on January 25th, where it said that the corrections had to be made. It's, it, the fence, the locks, the permit, you stated that it was fixed all the next day?
It was, yes, and the lock.
How'd you know about it?
We live right down the road.
So the email was sent to John?
Right.
But you knew about it? And you helped make the corrections, correct?
I knew of the correction notices because I was grading the road that was washed out from the fire.
To let him in.
To let them in. Okay, so when they were there, I took my piece of machinery and went to the ranch to make sure that they made it, because the road was washed out in several spots. Okay? Now, I've moved hundreds and hundreds of yards fixing the road, which did not require a grading permit.
Just to get people in and out of the road.
They never wrote me up on that, and I was only doing that to keep the road open. So that's how I knew, because I went there with my machine when they did the inspection.
So you knew about the inspection?
Because they were at our house first.
Okay.
And then they went to our property.
And then, so you knew that he said that the fence had to be fixed, the locks had to be fixed, and you talked to him at that time, Mr. Watts?
Yes, yes.
So you knew then you had ten days to make all these corrections?
We did correct the fence.
Was that in February, right?
But, no, this was in January. The fence, the locks, the permit, the structures and the grading, and the hoop houses were all on this. And so what you stated was you fixed the fence that day, or the next day. The locks were completed the next day, but the permits weren't done until September of 2017?
For the grading?
Correct. Chen was supposed to pay for that. I didn't have any money. So I...
We didn't have any money until our settlement came in for the fire.
Okay. Thank you.
Miguel, I'd like to ask him a question about the fencing. Can you show the, the, I think it was the first slide you had up there? Yeah.
That's...
That's the status of the fencing as of Code Compliance being there.
That is a gate that's just rolled back. That wire rolled like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, including the post that's there?
Yes.
I see, that's just, was a suspended post.
That's the gate that's just open, rolled back. You see the other fence?
Well, that's, I'm having a hard time, but I think I do now.
You see the fence posed by the water line?
Yeah.
That's a huge area fenced in like that.
Okay.
You're only seeing the gate that's rolled open.
All right. Thank you. Then the fence that's on the green post, if I understand...
Correct.
Did you make, did you need to make any modifications to that?
Not at all, other than the lock.
And yet, the, the corrections is to, it has to be surrounded by a continuous six-foot fence, and you're saying it was already...
It was surrounded by a seven-foot fence.
Surrounded by a seven-foot fence. So you just think that, that, that Code Compliance was erroneous in that?
I, I don't understand what happened there. I mean...
I think what he, what Tom was saying, a continuous fence, if he meant it needs to be up all the time, which it is, unless we have to get in there, which we rolled the gate back.
Okay.
The oke gate.
I can ask him his impressions on that.
There's an email dated February 19th, 2017, from John Cadoti to Watts. Says, "We have purchased new locks and secured them wherever there are present, presently plants growing." And he's correct, that was done, right?
Yes. But it was done the next day. It was not, I don't know why it's...
Yes, then it says, "All construction is scheduled to be, to be fenced and secured as completed or planted, whichever comes first." My first question is, was there, was there any more fencing to be done?
No.
So when he says that it's, "Construction is scheduled to be fenced and secured as completed or planted, whichever comes first," that's kind of irrelevant, then. Is that the, is that the idea? Because you already had the fence up?
Yes.
And you never put any plants outside that fence?
I believe what he was speaking of is if we ever expanded.
If you expand?
If we expanded.
But you didn't?
We did not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You look so confused.
Well, we are.
This is a good one. Okay. So I think what I'd like to do is bring Thomas back up, because I believe there were some questions for him.
were some questions for him.
Since I was just asking about the fencing, what was inadequate as to the fencing when you were there?
It was just incomplete, I think as I said, there wasn't a gate. So going back to that point about the permit posting and whether it was in the correct place, there wasn't, the permit has to be within 10 feet of the entrance. So given that there wasn't a gate, I included that section, and it says, once the fence, once the fence slash gate has been completed, the posting should be moved to within 10 feet of the entrance.
So, so basically, looking at this picture, I'm sorry.
Trust Chandler.
Excuse me, looking at this, looking at this picture, what you're saying is, that's not continuous fencing, that what they were referring to as a gate is not really an adequate gate, but you weren't talking about the fencing, other than places where they said there were gates that were like this, was the fencing adequate that was, that we see like along the, the green posts there?
The fencing was adequate in some places, but it wasn't, it just wasn't complete. I think to further complicate matters, this picture here is actually the other registration, nine...
Oh, no.
Nine, seven, six.
We appreciate your completeness, but...
Which is on the same parcel.
Let me just jump in real quick, another registration for nine, seven, six, which is the appeal hearing that's coming up, it's a, it's a cultivation site that was never developed. So all the cannabis that's supposedly on nine, seven, six is actually on nine, six, five.
Okay, so, this might be representative of what you found on the property that we are now considering.
If, yeah, if we could go back to maybe the picture showing the permit posting.
We basically have your testimony that the fencing, not just at these rolled-up gate, but there were gaps in the fencing where, or at least there were areas of the fencing that were not adequate when you were there?
Um...
I realize this is a long time ago.
Yeah, I think in this case, it's off, just off to the left of the picture here. Is that where you guys are going?
Yeah, that's the gate that was rolled up, right? Rolled up to that.
So that's, okay, so that's what the fence is, yeah.
You know, I, I would like to make a suggestion.
Yeah.
This is a lot to process, and I think maybe we should take a lunch break, come back, finish this appeal and the next one, so we're running upside, back to back, so...
Gives us a chance not to come back?
No, you're coming back, that's an order. And if there's anything that you feel like you can pull together through lunch to help us, or Mr. Watts, or Miguel, that would be great. So let's take a one-hour break and let's come back at 1:30. Okay.